Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's just now 7:30. I will give a moment more just to see that other board trustees join the call. All right, we'll proceed. We do have a quorum. I want to welcome board trustees Dr. Valerie Henning-Piedmont, Maureen Caraballo, Melissa Samansky. And we do have some guests this evening from Batel for Kids. Welcome. We did already call to order our meeting, so we can proceed. We have come out of executive session, and we are now proceeding with the regular board meeting. Valerie, do you have any announcements to share with the community?
Sure. Thank you so much, Lauren. I'd like to just mention in a few broad strokes what the school reopening committee that will have its first meeting on March 4th from 4:30 to 5:30, you know, will be looking at and sort of, you know, as we come together and then look at some of the components of our plan, which have to do with a few sort of broad strokes that are not, you know, necessarily, weren't necessarily in place when we met originally, originally back in July. And a number of school districts are engaged in this, as you know. So there are a couple of areas that are sort of real, of serious consideration with regards to our priorities. We first and foremost want to make sure that we're, you know, we're in a position to have as many people who are interested in being vaccinated as possible in terms of our school employees and our, you know, personnel in our buildings across the three buildings, and that's all faculty and all staff. So that's the first priority with regards to being able to then begin to figure out, you know, that, that, that time in which we'll be ready to look at our safety protocols and begin to consider, you know, when we can bring all children back into our schools. The second priority has to do with being able at, at that point to have at least access to a reliable surveillance test, a rapid test. So as you know, when the governor was considering the molecular, not, not molecular, but the micro clustering initiative, which would identify, you know, a certain population of children who, and staff who would voluntarily be tested, that those tests became available. And some districts are using those on a very limited basis. And the issue with the, with those tests is reliability. So about a third of the, of the time, the test correctly identifies people without symptoms. And obviously, there are no false positives, but it's a pretty, you know, high risk of identifying people who are actually positive, but they are tested as negative. So we don't consider that to be a reliable surveillance test, but we do realize that some form of surveillance testing would be an important part of the protocol for returning back to school. And we, that's one of the things that we certainly will be looking at as a committee and, you know, trying to make some decisions about what that would look like if something is available. And obviously, you know, we would like for it to be free. The Binax Now test were made available to districts at no cost. So we would hope that an alternative would also be available to districts at no cost. So I think every district is considering some form of surveillance testing as part of their return to, having all children to return to schools. The other component has to do with, you know, being able to, you know, determine, you know, within our current structure, once, you know, furniture is moved back into the classrooms, you know, we obviously are not going to, while we will have social distancing, we won't have social distancing at six feet. So that's something that our, our school reopening committee will be looking at. And of course, we have, have had for some time, desk partitions. We're fortunate to have some really talented people internally who have made a number of the partitions that we're still using. And, and obviously, Jo and Maureen have ordered, you know, and ordered very early on lots of those. So those will be very, very important to our ability to make sure that we, you know, get all of our children back into the building. Certainly, you know, as I said, it's going to take, you know, at least, you know, it won't be, it won't be tomorrow. It won't be, you know, the end of this month, but it certainly will, you know, you know, their districts, I can only tell you what some districts are discussing, that they're looking at, you know, a return after the spring break. So I think as a target, you know, that would be no reason, there is no reason for us to also consider that as a timeframe. So the, the school reopening committee, which so far I have, you know, quite a bit of interest in participation, you know, in addition to the existing committee, there are a number of other people who signed up. And obviously, I'm casting a wide net, hoping there are lots of internal people at each building who are interested in participating, all of our faculty and staff, as well as a number of interested community members, so that we have, you know, sort of a breadth of perspectives and, you know, and we can, you know, we're considering, you know, all the sort of relevant, you know, features of that decision so that we can make the best, you know, you know, we can choose appropriately and, and make that decision. But as I said, districts, all districts are looking at when they're reopening. So it's not a matter of not looking. That's not, you know, there's no one who's saying they're not reopening for all students, but it's just planning, you know, as we move forward. So I just wanted to make sure that I shared that, you know, as a, just to elaborate on the information that was in last week's weekly update. We also have to factor in a remote option, so we still have to be able to support families who, for, you know, personal reasons, are, you know, need to have their child work from home. So that will still, you know, that'll still be a consideration as we move forward. And we'll be thinking about how to make that happen in ways that are, are not, you know, you know, complicated in terms of what's happening in the classroom. So I just wanted to basically use my comments for that information. And as I said, March 4th, 4:30 to 5:30, and that's the date that was in Friday's update. And well, I look forward to meeting with everyone and talking to them. And I want to thank our county executive, George Latimer, for advocating for school personnel to gain access to vaccinations. So anyone who's interested in vaccination, our county executive is, has, has been working on our behalf to make sure that there are more, you know, there's more vaccinations available in more locations. So I want to thank him in advance for, for that continuous advocacy on our behalf. And I also want to wish everyone a happy midwinter recess, which starts next Monday, believe it or not. We've arrived at that point in time. So I hope all of you use the time safely and that, you know, you enjoy family and use, follow the same precautions that we've been following all along when we have these breaks. So, so important so that we, you know, don't come back and have an outbreak. I know the tendency is to want to, to do those things, but we really appreciate the safety efforts that people have taken and have been, and taken those seriously. So enjoy next week. And I want to thank our Jeff Kocinski and Mike Nicholson for being here this evening from Batel for Kids. I want to thank Mr. Andrew Windall for being here. Later on, he will introduce the resolution for the high-risk athletics. And, and thank everyone for all of their efforts, you know, all the faculty and staff and our board for everything that you've been doing up until this point to make sure that we all are, you know, moving forward, you know, with, you know, a collective mindset to not only keep our schools, keep our schools open, but keep everyone safe and, and, and plan for the future. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Valerie. Melissa Samansky, do you have any comments to share?
I do. Good evening, everyone. An update on the K-12 mathematics committee. We convened last week. The focus of our session was to engage in an inquiry within building-based breakout groups that was anchored in student work. The overarching purposes associated with this experience included deepening the group's shared vision of mathematics, strengthening analysis of student work, enhancing inquiry orientation, and determining instructional strategies to support at-risk learners. Members of the committee submitted portfolio pieces prior to the session where they outlined how they knew a student might be struggling. They gave a description of their lesson, including the student learning objective. They provided a student work sample, indicated what the student said or did to indicate difficulty, and then shared questions and interactions that took place with the student. They then engaged with members of the committee in their breakout rooms in a modified consultancy protocol. So they supported each other around understanding opportunities to promote learning and instructional strategies. And that is actually something that the participants said was incredibly valuable to them personally as educators, and they're interested in continuing into our next session. An update from science research, and this is an update from Melissa Shandroff, very worthy of recognition and celebration. On Saturday, January 30th, Hastings Science Research Students competed at the virtual Westchester Rockland Junior Science and Humanities Symposium. The students each presented a 12-minute PowerPoint of their research project to a panel of judges. Students competed at either the local or regional level, with students at the regional level having the opportunity to move to compete at Upstate Junior Science and Humanities Symposium in March. Hastings students who participated in the competition were Leib Benderski, Chloe Caraballo, Aiden Dowling, Bryce Jacobs, Jasper Lincoln, Sarah McAllech, Ben McDermit, Sammy Munch, Adam Oppenheimer, Kaylee Oppenheimer, Celeste Perels, Jacob Prismett, Atri Ray, and Naomi Van Hookstratton. And my apologies if I mispronounced the name. Adam, Adam Oppenheimer placed second in his regional room where he presented his project, an investigation of blizzard jet variability through an analysis of ton 599. And he will be moving on to compete at the Upstate JSHS competition sponsored by SUNY Albany in March. Celeste Perels presented first in her local room with her project, Up in Smoke, Recent Influences on Adolescent East Cigarette Usage, placing fifth in their regional rooms, were Sammy Munch, who, who presented 20 Years of the National Football League Playoff Predictions and What Makes Teams Win, and Atri Ray with The Hunt for the Elusive Intermediate Black Holes. Congratulations to all of the Hastings students for their dedication and commitment to their research projects. And we will be hearing more about that at the next Board of Education meeting. And then finally, hot off the presses, we have national merit finalists. We just received notification that we have three national merit finalists this year, Adam Oppenheimer, Jacob Prismett, and Caleb Painter. So congratulation to those students. And then, of course, congratulations to former Hastings High School student Ally Marpett and the Buccaneers for their win last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And congratulations to all of those students for those really fine achievements in research and in scholarship. And also, I just want to confirm at the next February board meeting, Melissa, we will hear more regarding the mathematics committee. Is that correct?
That is correct. We also have a presentation by the mathematics committee.
Great. Thank you.
We have another presentation too. Adam will be joining us to present his, Melissa alluded to that, but we do have him scheduled.
Fantastic. Maureen, are you sharing now, or are you going to?
Yeah, I'm going to share during the facilities update and the budget update. Thank you, Lauren.
Great. Thank you. And Sophia Monero, is there a student report you'd like to share out?
Yes, thanks. Um, so I'll start by giving a shout out to the academic challenge team. At their last competition, the A-team placed second in their division, and the B-team placed first in their division. And there's another countywide tournament this weekend. The Environmental Club is hosting workshops about endangered species for elementary schoolers this week. And the National Art Honor Society is teaming up with the Hastings Chapter of Amnesty International to host a music and art night to raise money for medical aid for innocent civilians in the Armenia-Azerbaijan conflict. And it's on the early stages, but it's supposed to be like an open mic night with some art virtual kind of thing. And they're hoping it'll take place in April. This Wednesday, the peer leadership program is having parent slash guardian night, where parents will get to join their students in a peer leadership meeting. And I remember my freshman year, it was super fun. We did an activity, and the parents get to see what goes on in PL. It's a lot of fun. And I think for most people, this snow day last week was like the perfect, much-needed relief. Since it was the first day of the quarter, people didn't really have any homework. So everyone just played in the snow. It was great. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. I don't see Sabine Hinckety on the call. Is that correct? My, okay. So thank you, Sophia. We will open up for public comment. I mean, this first public comment period, if you could please state your name, and if you're a Hastings resident, you can use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen so that district clerk, Melissa Deliberara, can call on you. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. And if you could please limit your comments to items on the agenda for this evening in this first comment period. And if there are comments regarding general district business, you can raise your hand and participate in the public comment at the second half of the meeting. Thank you. I've unmuted. The name is Ellie Ellen here. Can you please state your name?
Of course. I'm Lisa Egert-Lippen, and I live in Hastings. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. I have some questions and thoughts about strategic planning, which you have a presentation on tonight, and possibly a vote. My first point is, can you vote on hiring a strategic planning provider without having put the work out for multiple bids? I wrote to the board several times to point out that Board Policy 6741, as well as New York law, appear to require that you put the work out for bids and that you do this formally through the request for proposal process, you know, called an RFP. This lets you see what others would do and how much they would charge, but there was no RFP put out here. I suggested that you consult with legal counsel about whether you can proceed with the vote that was scheduled for tonight in light of this. You responded that you were addressing my concerns, but said nothing more. So my first question is whether you can proceed to hire a strategic planning company or whether you have to issue an RFP and get bids. Second point, I'm concerned that the cost of the provider who's on the agenda, Batel for Kids, is very high, between $60,000 and $80,000, according to your documents. Other districts have used less expensive outfits, and some just use the wealth of knowledge in their staff and community to do it on their own, like our own district used to do in the past. Remember, 13 positions were cut last year, and the board promised that you all would do your best to restore them. The $60,000 to $80,000 you're planning for strategic planning could perhaps be better spent replacing, say, one of the two world language positions that was cut last year. It's all about how we cut up the money pie, and where would we rather spend the money, on strategic planning or on something else? Third, I am concerned about the timing of starting strategic planning, as the board and district have plates that are more than overflowing, and you may not have the bandwidth to take on more and do it well. You're facing a budget that you said might be over the cap. You are starting a huge construction project. You have students falling behind academically. You have kids who are suffering emotionally with depression and isolation. And biggest of all, you are managing a district in the midst of a global pandemic. The community needs you to focus on these matters and not take on extra tasks like creating a portrait of a graduate through strategic planning. We're just not there yet. What is most important is to focus on making sure kids can meet the state standard and don't lag further behind because of COVID, as well as keeping them healthy, both physically and emotionally. This is a daunting task, to be sure, that demands your full attention. Please focus on this. It's critical for kids, all kids, especially our most at-risk learners. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else who has their hand raised. All right. Thank you, Melissa. So at this point, we do have a presentation for the board from Batel for Kids. And we also have a presentation afterward from Maureen Caraballo regarding our budget. So I won't take too much to introduce, but I will say that since my participation on the Board of Education, which began three years ago, we've had the goal of articulating a district-wide vision. And I'm truly pleased that we're at the point of beginning this phase of growth and definition that will come to be a district-wide strategic plan. A successful strategic planning process cultivates a highly effective school district while energizing community support for systemic definitions and improvements. The process brings the community together around our students. The process helps us collectively create a common vocabulary K through 12 that can describe the goals for the educational experiences we want for all of them. It builds dialogue and it establishes trust, and if done right, centers our students in the conversation. The result is an action planning framework for achieving objectives aligned with the district's vision of success. Dr. Henning-Piedmont is introducing us to Batel for Kids, a nonprofit organization that contracts with school districts nationwide to do this important work of strategic planning. They're here tonight to present to the board their process, and thank you, Dr. Henning-Piedmont, for inviting them to share their process with Hastings. I don't know, Valerie, if you'd like to share a few words.
Thank you so much, Lauren, and thank you for that endorsement of this important work. In response to the process, so it was brought to our attention. There was a concern about not issuing an RFP. So we, although legal counsel did inform us that our process was above board, you know, whenever we receive feedback, we certainly don't want to shirk that. So we are moving forward to issue an RFP for both segments of the work. One is the Portrait of a Graduate Work, which we are planning to start in March, and we'll bring forth that contract on, on March 10th, which will keep us on our sort of trajectory of being able to start that important work. And we will issue, well, the, the RFP will also be issued for the second phase of the work, which will, which is planned for September of the coming school year. Again, not because we were not going to do that, but that was the process that we would, we knew we had to follow up on and, and put into place before that work started in September. So we're way ahead of the schedule. But we certainly want to make sure that we are responsive, and we don't, the work is so important that we don't want to compromise it in any way, but by not addressing some of the concerns that were brought forth. But in terms of just a follow-up on what Lauren shared, you know, from the very beginning, even during the interview for the position of superintendent, I heard very clearly from the Board of Education, it's the importance it had assigned to being able to coalesce vision for the school system, all three schools, K-12, and that that had been a longstanding priority for the school system. When Melissa Samansky and I were introduced, before we actually officially started in July, we spent a lot of time listening to people inside of our school buildings, our educators, and, you know, all our faculty and staff, as well as all the families and community members. And it was an opportunity to really hear, you know, that sort of sense of what, you know, everyone felt should bear priorities for student learning. And, you know, the, this opportunity to be able now to bring both, you know, the, the school families together, faculty and staff of our three schools together, along with the family members of our community together to actually start talking together about our hopes, dreams, and aspirations for children as we think about the, the future ahead of them, you know, during a time in which the world has changed dramatically. The global priorities are very different from the ones that, you know, we could have imagined even in the spring. I mean, as early as the spring, some significant shifts have taken place. So we're, you know, the 21st century is here right now, and the academic and social emotional expectations for learners, you know, is, is more important now than, than ever, you know, to talk about the learner dispositions, you know, you know, skills that, you know, we talk around, such as resilience and adaptability, or being nimble, are so critical. And they're not just, you know, words. They really are dispositions that our, our youngsters need to develop a stealth, a skill at integrating in everything that they do, starting from the time they enter in kindergarten, all the way to the time that they graduate from, from high school. Throughout the, the time that Melissa Samansky and I have been, you know, learning about the school system, the, the goals for the board in terms of what was articulated in the 2019, 2020 school year also focused on those priorities. One of the board goals around teaching and learning stated as an objective, provide a positive, enriching, and educational environment for all students in Hastings, while supporting processes to identify and address areas of need throughout the district. And that goal is still a goal that, you know, we're, we're, you know, striving to, to achieve. And the development of a portrait of a graduate is, is, is the fuel for, for making that come to fruition. Another goal has to do with community engagement, and, and the goal, the objective is to communicate effectively and regularly with stakeholders around key issues such as facilities, budget, policy, and vision in order to deepen understanding. and vision in order to deepen understanding and trust as a public institution, serving the needs of our community. And finally, a goal around leadership and organization. Build organizational leadership and stability throughout the district, defining roles, processes and structures with an eye towards the district's future. So this notion of, of coalescing a, a, a vision or establishing a North Star that guides our, you know, our steps in curriculum, instruction, assessment, professional learning, the learning environment is really been a consistent priority. So I welcome Batel for Kids, which has been a leader in this work across the country in terms of leading this part of the process, which is that coming together, bringing together all of the, the, the members of our schools or those who are obviously available. Not everyone has to participate, but we want as many people as possible in our schools to participate. But and as many members of our community to participate. And, and that through that, you know, coming together, that collective, you know, conversation, you know, we're focusing the system squarely on students. And I think that is an important way in which we acknowledge their needs, their social emotional needs and their academic needs. And, and we don't need to wait, you know, to do that. So I look forward to hearing both Jeff Cortensky and Mike Nichols share and introduce Batel for Kids to our school system. Thank you much. Thank you so much again, Jeff and Mike for coming.
Thank you very much. I'm going to share my screen right now. Bear with me here for one minute. Does everybody, can everybody see the Batel for Kids Portrait of a Graduate? Thumbs up. Good. Thank you. So I'm very excited to be here with you today. You know, this is, this is really important work that we have had the privilege of focusing on and working with school districts from around the country for almost 20 years now. And it is something that every, every district is unique in how they look at it and approach it. And I'm just very pleased and, you know, privileged to have the opportunity to share some of our vision and a little bit more about our organization so that, you know, the board can make a very informed decision. So today, my colleague, Mike Nicholson and myself will be talking about Portrait of a Graduate and the strategic planning process. We're going to spend probably around maybe 40 minutes going through some presentation material. Through the process, if you have questions, by all means, you know, we'll try and monitor the chat. Or if you want to put your hand up and we can certainly break up or you can wait till the end of the, the 40 minutes approximately. And then we can open up the, open it up for questions at that point. My colleague, Mike, has, you know, extensive experience. He's worked in Massachusetts, New York, Ohio, Illinois. He's been a teacher, an assistant administrator, executive director, deputy superintendent, superintendent. His role at Batel for Kids is working with the school systems to kind of lead and facilitate the process that they're going through. So this is to work with the leadership teams, the design teams to ensure that the journey and the end results are maximized. So again, from our standpoint, we're very excited to be here with you. There's some general information we'll share about the company. And then I'm going to hand it over to Mike and Mike will actually lead a good portion of the conversation to share how he actually does this, the work he does, the importance of it. Try to answer, you know, anticipate some of the questions you might have about, you know, why now versus later? Impacts of doing it virtually versus face-to-face, some of the reaction from other districts. I think all the things that are probably going through your mind. So with that, you know, Batel for Kids, we're a national not-for-profit organization committed to collaborating with school systems and communities to realize the power of the 21st century. We're celebrating our 20th anniversary in 2021. So we've been at this for a while. This is something that, this is what we do. It's a big part of who we are. We're 100% focused. Oh, I apologize, my screens. Mike, a little bit there. So we are 100% focused on the education market and through our work touch a lot of educators and students. As school leaders, there's probably several questions that, you know, we're, we're thinking are coming top of mind is, you know, thinking about the hopes, the dreams, the aspirations that we have for our young people. You know, what are the skills, the mindsets that our children need to be successful in the future? The world is changing. It's constantly changing. It's, the, the pace of change is increasing significantly. And thinking about the implications for designing the learning experience. These are, you know, these are items that we think about all the time. These are, I think, topics that you as Board of Education are thinking about. And from our standpoint, this is what we really want to be focusing on today during the conversation. So when we think about yearning for something different, we're thinking about an inspiring vision. You know, this can be caused by a lot of different things, but you know, the emphasis on, you know, test scores. There's a lot of research and a lot of information going out about, you know, scores and should we be focusing on the scores? And what about other ways to assess and learn? You know, thinking about all of the changes that have been happening and also changing something that's dramatically different from how it was done 20, 30 years ago. The challenge of the diminishing teacher and education educator pipeline, desire for different definitions of success for our schools, the low levels of student engagement. We all have aspirations that we want students to be engaged, but how do we do it? What's the most effective way to ensure that we're, we're teaching and we're teaching the most effective possible way? If you start thinking about students, you know, what's the difference between student A and student B? You know, emphasis had been historically on focusing on the math, the sciences, English, thinking about the content, making sure that they knew it, that they test well for it so that they can move on. But thinking about how do we, how should, what should we be thinking about beyond just the test scores? Thinking about how can we contribute and compete in the global economy? You know, success depends on more than just what you know, but also how you communicate, you collaborate, you innovate and you think critically. You know, some of the results that you were sharing earlier in this, in this meeting about some of the outstanding achievements by some of your students. I mean, those are things that clearly they're focusing on additional areas beyond just the, the school and the grades. Now more than ever, our learning experience must continue to not only provide for the acquisition of Brigger's academic content, but intentional about fostering critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity, and really thinking about the 21st century skills. The Portrait of the Graduate, as we've talked a little bit about, is that framing of the new vision for a school system. It's something you've been talking about for a number of years. It's something that from our standpoint, we've been working on for a number of years. And again, once we start looking at this and start the journey, we're excited about the opportunity for your school district to not only set the vision that North Star, but then start to work on the implementation and start to move the, the school district in, in a direction for the 21st century. Now I'm going to transition this presentation to Mike Nicholson. Mike is going to talk more specifically about what is a portrait of a graduate, the strategic planning process, the process that we follow and give you more information about kind of the key critical pieces that I think you'll want to make sure you completely understand before we begin this journey. Mike, you're, I'm going to stop sharing and I'm going to ask Mike to take over at this point and then he'll continue on with the presentation.
Thanks, Jeff. Let me, let me grab the screen after you let it go. Okay, let's start right there. Hi, everybody, and thank you for having us tonight. As Jeff had indicated, I'm going to share with you a little bit more of the details of the process. Just first little background, Jeff had indicated, I'm actually from New York. I'm from the other side of New York. I'm from Buffalo, but we've done work down in that part of the state. We've, as a matter of fact, we're working with Suwanneka right now. We've done quite a bit of work with the Capital Region BOCs. So we're, we're very familiar with New York. My first 24 years were in New York and as a matter of fact, I went to school right near the middle of the state in Oneonta, Hartwood College. So it's, it's sort of like coming back home. So this, this Portrait of a Graduate, the, as you can see on the screen right there, our vision, our schools, our students. You can see the word "our" is repeated three times and that it really is for emphasis. This is a, this is a golden opportunity for the district and its community to define for itself what success is. It's not something that's taken from Albany, not something that's brought from DC. This is a vision that you create what success and you define what success looks like. And this is, this is critically important. There are a lot of benefits to that. The process is also is equally important as the product itself. So whatever you come up with, with defining this Portrait of a Graduate is matched by the, the value of the experience itself. This has a lot to do with, as Dr. Henning Piedmont had said, about engaging the community and revitalizing and galvanizing a great energy source behind this. And I'll show you more about how that looks. But some other redeeming features and benefits from this process are outlined here. Certainly an authentic vision. It engages all sorts of stakeholders and this, we highly recommend that students make up a non-trivial part of this process. We, as a matter of fact, if you wanted to quantify that, as I talk about later on with the design team, we believe students should make up 20% of the design team here. This is their education. It's really about engaging them, everybody as much as everybody else. This articulates the priorities as Dr. Henning Piedmont talked. This is a North Star. It aligns the organization. It's a momentum builder and it builds coherence. Every bit of that is true. This diagram here is just a depiction for illustrative purposes of when we talk about the community, we really do mean the community. We believe that both the internal community and the extra community, external community need to be vital parts of this process. Ideally, when we talk about the design team, we believe 50% should be external. And these are some examples here. Have a faith community there, business leaders, general community members, social service agencies. You see the examples there. We believe everybody who makes up part of your community should have some representation on the design team. When you look at the other side, the internal communities, every bit is important. Teachers, the students, support staff, administrators. And then you can figure out how you want the board members to be part of this as well, because obviously they need to be part of it. But this is, this brings everybody together. And when we talk about the experiences, every bit as important as the product. And you think about how many times do we have this opportunity to bring these vital stakeholders together in this common pursuit? And the payoff for that is, is immediate and longstanding. This is just a quick snapshot. This is Frederick County, Virginia. Just, you can see that in the, and with their design team, they had about a 50 or 60 person design team. And it's powerful when you get the, the teacher sitting next to the business owner or the students next to the community agency representative. The, it, the cross-sections are, are intentional and they're vital for the process. This Dr. David Savine is the superintendent there and he, he's just tweeting out this process. But it's, the portrait process, as we do it, lasts somewhere between four to five months. It's flexible. If you need to compress, we can do compressed. If you need to meet some other milestones, we can do that. But generally speaking, this process is about a four or five month process. The whole strategic planning process probably covers close to an academic year. Again, give or take, it can flex to what you need. There are about six stages in this process. Everything from the preparation stage where you talk about timelines, supports, participants. And then you move into the envision stage, excuse me. That's the envision stage is actually where the portrait is done. Envisioning means probably what you, you see there, it's, it's the metaphorical climbing up in the crow's nest, look out over the horizon and starting to find how you want your graduates to be X number of years out. How do you want them to be prepared for success now and in the future? The world that they are entering and they will meet as they go forward. The inquiry phase is the phase where we, we pull back and we pull all sorts of information, all sorts of data streams to get a portrayal, a balanced portrayal of how the district is now. Because when you're building a strategic plan, not only do you need that future vision, that flag out over the horizon, but you need to know in a, in a fair, balanced way how you're situated right now. Because the plan itself is what connects now to the future. That's what the strategic plan does. It connects now to the future. And that's what takes place through the design part is when we unpack the plan based on the information from the Portrait of a Graduate and the current state analysis is the document coming out of the inquiry phase. The launch phase is after the draft plan is complete. That's where we prepare for board action on the plan. So any other information or communication that needs to take place, that's where it takes place through the launch. And then succeed is where, as you can see from the name, is how we, we move the plan out into implementation and move into the action steps to get it, to get it rolling. So that's a brief overview of the six-phase process we follow for developing a strategic plan. For the portrait process in particular, again, that's a four or five meeting process over about four months or so, give or take. And it actually is a funnel. If you think in terms of the symmetry, it's a funnel process. We start with pretty big ideas and pretty big concepts in terms of how the world has changed, which is probably cliched in these times. But there are numerous examples of how the world is different from our generation, from previous generations to how the students are living it right now and what looks to be going on in the future. We give 12 examples of how the world has changed. And again, those, those examples that we have found during this pandemic time has probably only been highlighted. Certainly there's, there's some other examples we've gleaned over the last, what, say nine months, 10 months. But the, those changes have probably only been accelerated during this time period. Then we move down the funnel to collecting information on how people's aspirations, everybody in the design team shares their individual aspirations for the graduates. And we crowdsource that to see which ones represent most perspectives. Then we talk about how competencies are organized in the universe of competencies, because that's what's going to make up your portrait, our competencies, skills, mindsets, literacies. Then we're going to talk about individual company selections from the design team members and the group competencies, competency selections. And then we'll take those five streams of information and prioritize which competencies represent best your district. And then we move into activating the portrait. These are the themes that come across that top layer of the funnel. When we talk about how the world has changed, how the workforce has changed, talk about the world of automation, independent contract work, the service economies as some examples, the pace of change, looking at technology, the rapid growth of information and knowledge and the pace of innovation. The global, we look at how the environment has changed and how demographics have changed, both worldwide and nationally. And then how the human interactions, how that has actually changed over time. Whether we're talking about the premium of human interaction, the pandemic of loneliness, which that was going on before the pandemic. I'm sorry, the epidemic of loneliness that's gone on before the pandemic. Empathy, the declines in empathy over time, which have matched some other trends. So we talk about how those have really helped to bring out the premium of human interaction. I talked about the, the universe of competencies because we'll be drawing from competencies to populate the portrait. The universe of competencies can be broken down into three domains. Strength of mind, which is cognitive, and those are the competencies that refer to how we deal with our reasoning and memory. You can think of critical thinking, creativity and various literacies. The domain of interpersonal competency, strength of heart, how we initiate and manage interactions and relationships, either through a collaboration, communication, compassion. And then some examples of intrapersonal competencies, that's a strength of will and how we manage our own energy and manage ourselves. And you can think about resilience. and manage ourselves. And you can think about resilience, persistence, determination, grit. Those are some examples. We have worked with a number of districts across the country, as Jeff might have alluded to, coast to coast, actually. These are just some examples right here. If you want to talk about deliverables, deliverables would be the portrait itself. We help with our own in-house graphic designers. We help to work with the district and put in together the imagery and the, the communication vehicle for marking this change. Because what we're talking about is a rebalancing of outcomes for our students. Jeff, I believe I had alluded to the historical nature of schools and how the, the emphasis has been on content. But we're actually rebalancing in this process to, content is not going away, but we're elevating the importance of skills and mindsets. And that's an important signal to share both of the internal and the external community. So we want to make, we want to make that communication pretty vivid and memorable. So that grabs people's attention because that is an important signal in that shift. The middle imagery, imagery there is the front page of the current state analysis, which again is a balanced portrayal of the district and its current state. It usually numbers somewhere between 30, 40, 45 pages. That is really the summary of many streams of information. So you get a balanced portrayal of your district. So we know where we're starting from when we build this plan. And then to the right is the plan itself. We'll give you the text and a very consumable document so that you can move that plan into whatever format or medium that you need. These are some testimonies that we can leave behind of other district officials, superintendents and board members that have firsthand experience of our work. I just want to point out too, and I'll summarize that text. So again, because I will probably leave this PowerPoint behind. But this is actually a business leader who participated with us in North Kansas City, Missouri. And her, she had a very interesting perspective. Can you still hear me? Okay, thank you. She was a very active member of the design team. She represented, she's the chief people officer, tailing officer there of that $2 billion construction company headquartered in Kansas City. And she was intrigued, very intrigued by the process from her perspective for a number of reasons, because she thinks from a standpoint, from a, a community participation, she thinks businesses should be more active with their schools and supporting them and their work. But even more specifically, her company and her department was developing a portrait of an ideal candidate to work in their company. Roughly about the same time, probably they did it just a little before, that she worked with Kansas City and their portrait of a graduate. So she was very intrigued with how we did this in Kansas City and how they did it back in her pretty large company. Really fascinating at the end was when we were done with the portrait in North Kansas City, she was either surprised or not so surprised that it was pretty similar with the profile that they came up with an ideal candidate. And she thought that was something that was really worth a shout out for in this whole process. And another testimony is from David Baker up in Vermont. He was, you can see his comments right there. His shout out was more about how this process during the pandemic. We were working with him right when things started shutting down in the spring. And they ended up moving right through the summer with the process. They persevered through it. And what he found was actually doing this process during the pandemic did a couple of things. One, it helped pull people out of crisis mode for a while, which he thought that by itself was pretty therapeutic. It helped them look at very hopeful and aspirational things, forward-looking, which you can imagine. The pressures and attentions now often causes to pull our head down and to, and to work with things that very necessarily have to be attended to right now. But he said, actually doing this process allowed people to look up and look forward, which was helpful for helping people move through the tough times that we're in right now. Another benefit was, he said that we are learning quite a bit right now because of the change conditions, both teaching and learning. We're getting some insights about our students, about our teaching and learning processes. He said that now could be applied right to the strategic planning process and not, not try to be kept to later, later use later on these lessons. So we thought his insights were, were pretty valuable and we think true as well. So that's, let me stop right there and take any questions for Jeff and myself. We have some other things later on, but we, we think this is probably the most important to attend to right now. So let me pause right there, please.
Thank you, Mike and Jeff. Board members, do you have any questions or comments based on the presentation that they've shared so far?
Does that mean we anticipated every question?
I have some. I will. So thanks for taking time at night to come and present, present to us.
You're welcome.
And so can you talk a little bit, you know, to my mind, strategic planning has two parts. One is the content, you know, the, I think in your, and, and the, the board may have seen a more detailed proposal that you put together, which I read through, but what I call the desired future, the portrait of the graduate, right? That's, that's the it, the thing. And then there's the process to, to get to it. And I think that one of the things that can often, so there's lots of places. So I do strategic planning for a living in the corporate world. And I, I, I think it's strategic planning in this way. There's an, there's an A, there's a B, and then there's a process to get from A to B. That's the essence of strategic planning. And everything you need to know about what can go right and what can go wrong is in that one diagram. And so some of the things that can go right are you get to, or wrong, you get to really clear idea of B. But you don't really count for where you are at A in a clear way, and you don't have a great process from getting from A to B. So we have a lot of clarity on B. You don't have a lot of great ways to get to, to get to B. Another problem that can occur is you never get a clear idea of B. Then doesn't matter how good you are at C because you just never, you don't have a clear target you're heading towards. I, I raise these because I think that, you know, you, you raise a lot of great points about the kinds of learners that we need and that we need to create. And one of my biggest fears about any strategic planning process is that it becomes pro forma. It becomes somewhat cliche. It's something you probably could have guessed beforehand. And when you don't get there, you end up creating more cynicism than you actually do helping because you've kind of laid out some things that sound pretty good. Bunch of people might have been able to guess them in the beginning. And, and people, you know, I think the biggest part is to, to some degree, you know, I read through probably 40 of your portraits of a graduates on your website. Topically, not that different, any of them really. I mean, if you get down to it. I think what you would say, what I would say as strategic planner is the real value came in the alignment process. It came in the process of dialogue and discussion to really get to those things. And so one of my concerns in a COVID moment is are we going to get that kind of dialogue, right? So, so I think there's two ways to look at this. One way is people are thirsting for that kind of dialogue right now. They're really hungering for it because, you know, first of all, they're just hungering for interaction. That's the first thing. Second thing, there's a real sense of gaps that are opening up in our, in our world everywhere. And education can help fill some of those gaps. And so people want to talk about that. So I think there's a real opportunity to invite that in. The risk is that we do it at a time where people are feeling burned out. They can't bring their best selves or their best selves are brought over online. And the right people aren't invited or the right people are burned out at the time where you want to invite them. And the process ends up being, again, this somewhat pro forma, check the box process where six to eight of the right concepts come out, things that would be hard for us to argue with, right? You can't not, you can't argue with resilience, right? You can't argue with communication. You can't argue with critical thinking or collaboration. But they become things that we kind of get to through a non-truly deeply engaged process with each other. So I, I, I wonder, you know, if, if we move beyond the kind of the theoretical of these buckets and we talk about the real of where we are right now in the world. What, you know, what is your thought about this process now? And how do we actually make it work and have it not be, you know, somewhat of a surface level, check the box process?
No, thank you for that. Is it Mr. Sunheim? Is that how you say that?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for that. No, I, I think those are legitimate questions. I, there might be several responses to those. One is that from our continuing to do it, was there, was there an initial backing off early on? Most definitely there was. When this thing first hit, I don't know when it hit you in particular. Well, I actually, I was on my way out to New York City. I think the second week in March and things started shutting down. So I think we probably all had a similar timeframe. So there was an initial pullback, but schools, to your point, schools realize in districts, we've got to keep, we've got to move on through this for several reasons. One is that we do need something, we do need a forward-looking North Star, especially during this time. As you said, they're hungering for, and I think that continues to be the case, that they're hungering for this type of dialogue. There's another one is that with our observations of districts doing this, we're actually finding that our, the attendance at these things are actually more than when they were before. Because their ease of access to getting to these meetings are actually easier than the earlier way, getting in their car and driving. So that little happenstance ease of access is actually increased participation with these things. Your point about the, are these things pro forma? I, I'm glad you looked at our website and looked at different examples and you probably did see there's no overlap between different portraits. I will also say no two are the same. You will have several competencies that might show overlap, but no two are the same because those last few ones that people use to populate actually really identify that, that community. The important part is that they chose them and it wasn't handed to them. So the important part was that in that process, they came together and they decided nobody else decided for them. So that prioritization, I think, was important and they, and they feel a sense of ownership about that. When you move from that to actually the drafting of the plan, another key part about how do we bridge, I think from you said, you said from A to B, that's, that's critical. And that's something that when we make, as part of the community process, again, you get broader understanding. You get broader support and broader buy-in when you do that. We, we just think it's a very healthy process to do right now, but I mean, you guys have the best eyes on whether that's true for your community as well. But we found this to be very, very instructive, very helpful. And people get to apply these very things that we're learning right now. Because you said there are shifts going on or gaps going on in the community. They are right in front of us right now. And oftentimes these were gaps that were there before, but they're just, they are right in more stark relief right now. And what a time to be able to apply this, this learning when it's right in front of us. I hope that answered some of your questions.
Yeah, it did. I, I'll just have one follow-up and then I'll let other people ask some questions. You know, to me, I think the, the alignment process is more important than the categorical topical process. Because like I said, I, I mean, I just think there's so many, so many ways to skin the cat of 21st century skills. I think we're, we're all pretty clear on what those are nowadays. I think some people are clearer than others, but we know that there's a more inclusive collaborative, critical problem-solving way we all have to work. I mean, that's, that's just, that's where we're heading. It's not a secret anymore. You know, the question is, how do you, what do you, what do you, what does that mean? How do you really unpack that and interpret that? And what does that mean in terms of what it looks like for our kids in the future? That getting, getting people to have robust dialogue about that across our community, that's, I mean, that's gold.
I agree.
Right? That, that's where the gold is. And I, and I will, I'll just, I'll just lay it right on the line. I will say right now, I question our ability to do that right now. I question that. And I think that if I can get over that concern and that questioning, I'm behind this. And if I can't, I, I, I'm not personally interested in getting behind a box checking exercise.
I agree. I wouldn't either. I totally agree.
So I just wanted to kind of lay it out. So that's, yeah.
And I, and I wonder just to one follow-up to what you just said. Is how, how is this framed to the community too? What's the importance behind this as we frame this and communicate this to the, to the community? Because I, I think people do follow those cues, no signals.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's, that's key. And I think, you know, I, I think your point around 20% of students is interesting. Maybe it's, maybe it's even more.
Yeah.
But I mean, I'll be honest, I've been in board for five years. A lot of times I trust the students more than the, the other people in this community. Because not for any other reason, but they're living it every day. And we have some really smart, really smart kids in this community. And, you know, the insights a lot of times for kids are much better than, than some of the adults. Because, you know, we're all busy doing other stuff. We zoom in, we zoom out. The kids are, the kids are there. So hey, that would be interesting. Is there a way to, is there a way to involve more kids in this process? Can we, can we get this thing to not feel like, excuse my language, a bullshit strategic planning exercise? All right. That's, I think, what we're all interested in here. And I think, you know, whoever's listening on this call or, you know, I mean, look, we've all been in some sort of organization and have been a part of those. I mean, if you've been part of more than three strategic planning exercises, a good chance that the majority of them were BS. That that's just the world we live in nowadays. And I, I'm, I don't want to be a part of that. And I don't think anyone in this community does. So if we're going to do this, let's do it. And, and let's, and let's be serious about this. And let's, let's really, you know, where, where there is some friction, let's invite it in. Let's figure it out why it's there. Let's, let's understand why certain people have diff, and, and let's, you know, kind of duke it out, you know? I mean, you know, where I come from in the, in the business world, you know, you want your executive teams to have a good fight because it means they care. And it means they've got strong opinions and they're passionate. Now, can you make it productive? That's the key, right? Just people fighting with each other is not, 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 not a great thing. So I, I, I would love to explore that kind of thing, that sort of strategic planning process. You know, I know this is, this is a pre-COVID term, but I'll use it because it's what's top of mind. You know, getting a few people in a room to put some stuff on a flip chart, you know, is, is, it is what it is. It's good. It's interesting. It's helpful. But that's just one modality to really get really good dialogue out. And, and that's, that's what I would love to see us do.
Yeah. Can, can I add another point to what has been discussed? It, I think the critical piece is is the board, is the community ready for this? And because I think the resiliency of the students, I think we're finding in many instances, they really shine through this process. And when sometimes limits are placed and they, oh, they're not, you know, they're not going to, they're not going to be a big contributor in this. We're actually finding that the students are actually bringing some of the best thinking to this process. So I think to a certain extent that perception of, of strategic planning, that's out there. There's no doubt. It's, and that's part of why we do the portrait of the graduate first, because we, we, we step it back. We think about, we pull people away from their biases and we get them thinking where they're not, you know, fighting for their fiefdom and fighting for their peace that they, you know, we have to have this, this is sacred. No, when we're talking about those things that you talked about, you know, though, no one's going to argue with those things. Now it's just the journey to get to that point. And then as you go through that process, I think Mike will allude to, there's magic that occurs. And that then allows the next step in the process, the alignment to take place. And it allows it to be more effective as you launch it through. But, you know, part of it is if the, if the district's not ready, candidly, that, I mean, COVID is not in, from what we're seeing is not the reason, like at this stage, when everything has, you know, been put into place, we now know more about COVID. We're in the process of getting vaccinations. I mean, we're, we're in a much better place now than we were back in April. You know, May, when there were still so many questions, there was still so much emotion, et cetera. We now are finding that we, we've got these things in place. So now if the district is ready, then this is, this is a really good opportune time to take and to move forward and start moving towards that vision and get away from this COVID fatigue. But if the district's not ready for that, But if the district's not ready for that friction, that a little bit of, we're gonna have to push it, you're gonna have to steer it. Then, you know what, then you're, candidly, you're better off holding off. Because that is something that is going to derail this process. It will make it more difficult if the board is not unified in an agreement that this is what it potentially can be. So I just, I would just echo, you know, some of the things that have been stated, but also honing in on is the district ready and are you ready for that type of good discussion? And, um, the ones that are, the districts that we found have been able to move this and they've been very positive about the results and the journey that the district went through. And the alignment of all of the, you know, the community. So it has a tremendous amount of potential. But it's, you're right, it's not just a check mark. If it's, if you're looking at it and if you're thinking it's just a check mark, then you, then it's, this isn't the right place to, you know, this isn't the right time to do it.
Jeff, thank you for, uh, bringing that up. How would you suggest a community, a board, a district try to figure out if their community is ready? And, uh, would you suggest you also try to figure out, uh, you know, if your teachers are ready? Uh, it's definitely was a board goal of ours in 2019. And, uh, we've got, uh, just a few voices that have already spoken out in the community expressing that this isn't 2019 anymore. But, uh, those two ideas, uh, one that you mentioned and one that I threw out there. How do we find out that our community is, uh, ready on this? Or how have other school districts, uh, done that? And would you, uh, think that we need to, uh, assess teacher involvement, even though they're just one of the key stakeholders? Thank you.
Mike, you want to go ahead? Yeah, sure. I, I I really think it's, it's, the readiness from the leadership at, up top. That's, they're the ones who are going to send the cues and send the importance about this. If they believe that they're, you're ready for it, people will come. That they, they, I think they realize how unique the opportunity would be. I think they realize how important the opportunity would be, especially if you make students the center part of this. People like, they love working with the students on this. So I, I really think it's, it's the board and the district leadership reflecting on themselves. Are we ready for this? If you're ready for it, people are going to follow. That's, it's a big deal. That's not something people take lightly. If the organization's doing strategic planning and again, making the students the center part, people will follow. That's what we've seen during this process.
Yeah, I, I would, I would also add that the teachers, majority of the teachers are on board with this. From what we have seen in the districts, that has typically been the least challenging area because from their standpoint, they've been looking at, you know, the test score, they're dealing with situations right now where they're not getting data. They're not getting certain information that allows them to do the typical comparisons. Uh, that allows them to measure certain things. So they're, they're yearning for, hey, you know, there's other ways to do this. They, um, what I have found is some of the school systems don't have the foundations in place. So that something strong like this that gives them, is it going to be something that can be leveraged? So they have to get certain things in place, certain disciplines in place, a little bit of a framework. And then they're like, now that I've got this framework in place, we now have the opportunity to take advantage of going forward with this process. But typically it's not, it's, you know, some of it is, sometimes they have to work through some of the conditions of, there, there's a new, there's a, uh, there was a new superintendent who just took over in a district. Uh, has been there for, you know, three months. And it was a situation where there were things that this superintendent just didn't know and needed to get certain things in place before they were able to move forward. And that was a situation where they have said, hey, we're going to hold off on this. But as they, that individual went and talked to the teachers, the teachers were extremely excited about this. They were like, yes, this is good. The students were excited about this. Putting the students first, uh, you know, as Mike attested to, was extremely popular with the communities. So I, I, again, I think it's, you know, you have a pulse for your, your area. We, part of what our job is to do is to facilitate, facilitate the process, to ensure that the journey is a effective journey. It's also something that allows you to move through and get it, you know, get something accomplished. But at the end of the day, we don't create this result. We don't, we don't actually create your portrait of a graduate. This is something you're doing. So I think the, I, I, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question as effectively as I could, Jeremy, and I apologize, but I'm, you know, what we're, there's not one specific, if this happens, then you can do it. It's, it's a sense of, uh, when we've, the people we've talked with, teachers typically are not an issue. Uh, students are not an issue. It's more of, is the, is the, is the board going, because we, we provide you with the tools, the messaging, all of the information to leverage. And then to take that to the community. So we'll provide you with those templates. We'll provide you with that information so that you are following the right steps and the right processes. And that's part of what Mike will work with you on. But it's got to still be something that, you know, there has to be a desire and a want in order to work your way through this process. So I still kind of come back to, that's still the most important thing. And I think to Mike's point, it's the board, it's the leadership team. And it's the unification of that. You can have these discussions, but at the end of the day, you need to be unified. This is what we're going to do. And we really believe that this is going to help our students. It's going to help us be able to explain to the parents, here is why what you're giving us, your child, you're investing, we're investing, or you're investing your child into our system and they're going to look like this when they graduate. And they're, this is the investment, this is what the results will be for them. And I think if you're able to answer that question, that is, this is a process that is going to allow you to do that even more effectively going forward. Mike, is there anything else you would like to add?
No, I think, I think we got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you guys do, um, just to follow on Jeremy's question, do you do ever, uh, 10, 15 question change assessment, you know, change readiness assessment sort of thing, just to kind of under, just to get a broad cross section of the system, what the system's feeling or?
Quite honestly, we haven't because when people contact us, they've made that decision already.
I, I have a question, um, but then I also, just because, um, the way the conversation is going, I, I think I, I let off, uh, sort of, uh, you know, showing my hand and saying that I'm personally in support of this moment being the right time for our district. But I think I, so with that, I just wanted to share two reasons why, and then I do have a question. So to the reasons why I think, you know, I think we all wish we could hit a pause button and, um, come together on these ideas and, and pop, you know, for more than this reason, for bigger reasons, pause the pandemic and come together on this, uh, project together, this endeavor as a district. But that's, that's not going to happen. So we need to continue to, to work, um, despite the, the conditions that we're currently working in. Our, we ask, uh, you know, no less of our own students, so why shouldn't we ask the same of ourselves? So I think, um, the, the two pieces that I feel provide me with the, uh, substance to know that there is the momentum or twofold. One is, um, the work of our, uh, of our curriculum thought group that's been ongoing for over a year, um, which is providing an opportunity for a cross-section of community stakeholders to engage on big ideas, um, together with district leadership. Um, it's revolved around book studies. Um, they've, it is included. Faculty, it's included, um, different members of the community outside of, uh, outside of parents that are in Hastings. And it's really engaged, uh, our, our district on these big ideas already. And if board members can, can look back on, on the meeting notes that we've been, um, sharing out, I think you'll see a real progress and a real momentum building for, for, um, moving in this direction. Secondly, um, then is related to the students. And that is this time last year, receiving a report to the board of, of, of the first ever of its kind, uh, uh, district-wide, uh, student climate survey, school climate survey. And the content in that survey, um, was really eye-opening and somewhat alarming in terms of the perspectives that students felt about being participants in the district. And, um, I think that, um, this process and, you know, I think I agree that 20% or even 25, 30% student participation would really, um, give the, the, the jolt to the arm that our district really needs in terms of, of making the experience of the student i- in our system really, um, really become the center and become, um, become really centered in all the work all the adults are doing. So I think, I feel like this process, um, would be a response, a direct response to hearing the data that came out of that. And, and really doing so in, in a thoughtful and methodical way that includes them. So I think that, that those are two pieces which make me feel like this is, um, despite the pandemic, the right time to, to be doing this work. And, and also just being on this board and, you know, partnering with the administration through the pandemic without having uh, a vision, uh, real goals for the district has been, it, it's been so frustrating. It's been, it's been, it, it, it makes our work all the more challenging on a daily basis, uh, to keep moving through this crisis without a real, um, community developed set of goals in mind. They can, I, the board can have goals. I can have goals as the board president. But they're, they're not, they're not filtered through a real mindful lens of all the, the facets of our community. Um, and to do, be working through this pandemic without that in hand has been, um, so challenging. And I, I would, uh, I, I would feel it irresponsible to not, um, let future iterations of this board have a real map of goals to work through if, if ever a crisis were to be confronted again. So with that, now I do have a question. My question is really, um, you know, based on this idea of, of, of real rich dialogue. And I think, um, you know, I think like all student communities around the country, I think we're likely no different. We've been having, um, very, um, fraught conversations around, um, anti-racism, anti-bias, um, real, uh, different perspectives that, um, need an opportunity for a, a forum to, um, build bridges and build, um, real listening. And can you speak on, um, instances where this process has provided a productive venue for, um, you know, either those topics or other topics that are, uh, can be confrontational in nature and how, um, working through the portrait of a graduate work has, has facilitated that.
Yeah, thank, well, yeah, I, I thought my thing was on mute. Thanks, Ms. Berman. And am I, can I bookmark? I'd, I'd like to come back to you if time allows about the student climate survey you did, uh, last year. But let me, let me address your, your question about candor and, um, some of the some sensitive topics. There's, there seems to be, um, something about that, that, the dynamics within which this, we've had to have these, uh, meetings done remotely over the last, uh, number of months that has certainly has not taken away from candor. In some ways, it shows it might have offered, um, people to be candor without being, if you set the norms right, without being disrespectful, but they're able to share their, their points of view. I, I point to some, uh, experiences in Virginia. We work with Albemarle County, um, School District in Virginia. That's the place of Charlottesville. Charlottesville is in that domain. They have, um, through this process has solidified an anti-racism policy. That was actually in the throes before Charlottesville. You can imagine how Charlottesville had accelerated that. But through this process, they've been able to make this, uh, one of the centerpieces of their strategic planning process. And there's something about bringing the different stakeholders together that, that almost by definition have different perspectives that helped to set up a, um, a dynamic where people are able to share, recognizing there are people with different perspectives. So they enter into that in a way that's inviting both ways, inviting to share it and inviting to receive it. And I don't know what it is about this, the remote environment that might be contributing to that, but I also will pair that with we're learning from a growing number of districts that through their, through their human resources, um, department. The candidate interviews they're doing for positions, they want to continue during, do in a remote setting, even when we go back to in person. Because of the, something about the dynamics of this kind of environment, I don't know what it is. But there's something about it that is, is allowing these, these necessary conversations to happen and happen in a way that, again, is inviting on both, both ends.
Mike, I also think, uh, the Columbus, uh, city schools with some of the, the work that was going on there. Uh, I don't know if you can talk to that, just with some of the riots, some of the, you know, with, uh, you know, some of the challenges that occurred. You know, this past, well, I guess probably several months ago, uh, that was, I think, very, uh, this portrait of a graduate and, and the work that they had done allowed them to work through this process in a, in a more effective way. Because there had been, they had started to build some, uh, relationships, uh, started to have a better understanding and appreciation. So that when some of these things occurred in other cities and it dramatically impacted them, they were able to kind of steer through it and make some changes to the way that they would start to look at this. So I, I really do believe that this can be a powerful, um, uh, opportunity to, to leverage and also, you know, from a, you know, your standpoint about the, you know, having the, having the doc, having the vision, having the, the North Star to steer towards during some of those challenging times. It, it just seems to bring more focus. It seems to bring more, um, alignment, uh, for everyone as they're working through some of these difficult discussions. But at least it gives everybody, this is where we want to go. And this is where, you know, the, it, it helps formulate that discussion and it makes it a more productive discussion than not really knowing where you want to go. So I, I don't know, Mike, if you can talk to that a little bit, uh, if you have some additional experiences.
No, so Columbus City Schools, which is in our backyard, because we, we're in Columbus, Ohio. It's the largest city in Ohio, largest school system, 50,000 students. They, they were in the portrait process. Um, they had about 120 people on their design team. Uh, again, all different facets. They also made part of the process to do a school safety, um, school safety, uh, community engagement process because they, the SROs, the school resource officer's contract was up. And so they want to make, they saw how the portrait process went so well in terms of community engagement that they want to, during the current state analysis, when their design team wasn't meeting, they want to do the, um, a community forum on the school resource officer. Well, they called the schools, school safety, but a lot of it had to do with the school resource officer. And so you can imagine how those conversations, if they're not done well, can, um, can be quite lively, put it that way. But they, and they're having very productive discussions and, and now they've moved, they've moved back into the process of the strategic planning. But again, it's all, it's all the norms you set up. It's the people. It's very important. How you constitute the design team. There's several facets that we work on with leadership in the beginning part. To make sure that we constitute these design teams with as robust participation as possible. You want the, you want the people who are the, um, what, what's the expression? The, um, oh shoot, the ones who ask the tough questions. Gadflies, the gadflies, the ones who can ask the, the tough questions who need to be at the table. You don't steer around them. You, you invite them on there because you have to have all the broad perspective. So these things are, are considered when we constitute the process early on. But if leadership is ready, if leadership is ready for this, we have the process to make it as robust as I think you're seeking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Ms. Berman, can I, can I follow up one about that student climate survey? I don't know if you had a chance on how you analyze that data, but it, it's, it's pretty well documented. Maybe you guys know this. But when you do climate surveys like that, those often are proxies for student engagement. There are a lot of different ways to ask about student engagement. Uh, climates are, are one of them. I don't know if you looked at it and if you had enough participation from students to see this, but if you looked at, if you had enough students participating, you likely saw a decline, a weakening of perceptions about climate as the kids got older. That's a well documented trend across education for at least the last third. Uh, that's a well documented trend across education for at least the last thirty years. Gallup Organization calls it one of the colossal failures of public education is that we allow students to become less engaged, less motivated, the longer they go in school. They end up graduating among the lowest levels of motivation engagement about learning. This is another gap. This is another pattern that was accelerated and amplified by COVID. We also think this is, this is another reason why this, this is a remarkable time to address that now. Um, because we're seeing it right in front of us right now about engagement. And to your point, if we can make the kids the center part of this progress, they'll see we're acting on that information to help um ameliorate and fix that colossal failure, if that went on. Now, maybe you guys didn't see that in your, in your district, but um that's why I ask about it because it's a well documented feature uh dynamic all across education. Maybe that doesn't happen in your district, but that is something we've also seen amplified by COVID, which makes the timing of this um really important.
Thank you.
Yep. Well, thank you for having us. If there's anything else we can do, please let us know.
Yeah, and and we appreciate the discussion. Uh, everyone's extremely candid and open, so thank you very much for this. And uh we hope that we've given you some things to think about, uh, which was really the goal today is just to share, start to give you a better perspective of our organization, our philosophies and the and the type of, you know, individuals like Mike that we have within our team to uh to facilitate the process and to be with you, walking you through this process, uh, you know, holding your hand and working with your leadership team and your design team to ensure that you get the results that you're looking for. So uh, thank you very much for the invitation. We appreciate it and um certainly look forward to um any further follow up after this meeting.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you. Bye bye.
Thank you, Mike. Have a good evening.
All right. Well, to entirely shift gears, um, we um now have a budget overview. Maureen has uh provided us with a very in-depth review and um I will let you go ahead, Maureen.
Yes, Valerie and I are going to co-present. Um, so Valerie's going to kick us off and then I'll be, we'll be tag teaming on it.
Okay.
Valerie will start us off.
Thanks. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Maureen, and thank you in advance, Maureen, for all the great work you are doing um in service to making sure that, you know, when we start this process, you know, we are always ready, you know, and a great deal of thought and care has been given to, you know, listening to, you know, uh, the community and and being mindful of, um, you know, the uh concerns that are, um, you know, we've heard from the community relative to, um, you know, this year's budget in light of, you know, the the challenges associated with last year's budget. Um, so what Maureen and I want to do is, is first, um, my sort of task is to provide an overview of of this beginning process. As you know, this is the kickoff conversation and uh at the very end of the presentation, we have follow up dates. Uh, September tenth and Sep- and I'm sorry, September, March tenth and March twenty second will be the detailed budget presentation. So we will have uh one half of our budget managers present on March tenth and the other half present on March twenty second uh to to go into details, certainly not at the level that we be had the budget managers go into that, to the uh line by line analysis last year. We don't think that that's necessary this year, but to kind of go over the broad strokes and to certainly respond to any uh changes and and shifts that the the budget managers have had to make. But I'll take you through this uh introductory process or overview, which is sort of, you know, to ground you in some of the sort of, you know, uh constants or um, you know, the uh considerations that are always, you know, uh, front and center when budget development starts. So in terms of just, you know, our priorities for this ha- this first presentation um is, um, you know, we want to make sure that we take a look at, you know, budget goals. Um, you know, we'll uh take you through a summary of the budget, uh, some major factors, obviously, that impact the budget, which won't be a surprise to you. You've heard these before. Um, the impact of a tax cap and it's a funding challenge, uh, which is always a front, you know, uh, sort of in the middle of of this process. Um, and and again, the use of uh reserves, which is uh certainly one of the components or one of the strategies that school districts utilize. Uh, in terms of framing the purpose of a budget, I think everyone understands, you know, sort of, you know, um, you know, without a a lot of uh work that that a budget is really the embodiment of sort of the goals of the system. So every aspiration or hope that we have for for our students, because we have, the system is about students. It's 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 uh, you know, that, you know, the students are front and center in terms of our priorities when we think about, uh, you know, uh, putting forth a balanced budget, you know, to the Board of Education, which is the the priority, sort of the 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 short term priority. And then obviously, the long term is putting it forth, the board putting it forth to the community uh for a vote in in uh May. So in terms of uh of it being able to articulate the resources necessary to educate all of our children, that's a a major consideration of priority and is purposely the first one. Um, again, it's the embodiment of our beliefs and our values, you know, for all of the children in our community. Um, and it motivates us to look beyond just this one year. You know, the budget development process is a multi-year process. So it's, you know, we're thinking about, you know, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school budget, you know, as we're developing the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school budget. Uh, so it it's a continuous philosophical, you know, sort of uh scaffold process, um, because uh it does require thinking over time. Uh, in terms of the nuts and bolts of the budget, you know, uh, again, on slide five, um, there are, you know, some guiding sort of steps that are part of every budget in terms of, you know, what the budget supports. Uh, so the general support in this language is is legal language that comes from, you know, obviously, you know, the New York State in terms of preparation. So you'll see these titles associated with um how uh we describe our our appropriations. Uh, obviously, there's general support, you know, so there's a budget for uh Board of Education, um, and different, the different staff who are associated with that, central administration, finance, uh, legal operations, maintenance and insurance. These are pretty standard for all school districts. And um as we go through the line by line analysis, you know, in the coming two budget presentations, you'll see how those resources are utilized. Instruction is another category, um, curriculum, supervision, teaching, special education, instructional media, uh, pupil services, technology, co-curriculum, athletics, fall underneath that broad title of instruction. Transportation, as you know, you've heard a lot about transportation from last year, if you followed our budget presentations. And that's uh certainly um a a key component uh when it comes to not only the transportation services provided for children at Hillside, but also for for some of our learners who are transported uh to out of district placements. Um, and uh the undistributed portion of our budget, which would be all of the employee benefits and debt um and uh the employee retirement system, uh, social security, health insurance and debt service. So all of those categories are what you'll see when we uh conduct our line by line analysis. In terms of the annual budget goals, um, you know, our priorities, front and center, are to maintain our programs and resources. You know, we're in service to children. We do not want to cut programs or resources or diminish those in any way. So our priority is always to look at the development of the budget from that standpoint. Uh, we want to always create opportunities for our children to access different content, rigorous courses, higher level courses. Uh, access, as you know, is a key component of ESSA, Every Student Who Succeeds Act, and being able to have those offerings for all of our learners, not just the ones who may, you know, sort of traditionally take those courses, but all of our learners need access to rigorous content and different types of courses. And we want to make sure we can support, you know, our uh our educators and our administrators when they put forth recommendations for those types of courses. Um, we also want to invest in professional learning of all our, of all of our uh faculty and staff. That's important. Um, you know, just because we all have, uh, you know, you know, certainly, uh, some of us have to have certifications to in order for us to to function and operate in the roles that we're in. And that certainly applies to, you know, all of the instructional uh uh professionals in the system, but everyone, uh, whether it's, you know, directly involved in the classroom or working in other components of the system. You know, uh, there are a lot more sort of complexities associated with our roles and responsibilities. And we have to, I think it was um uh Doug Sundheim who referenced, who made a reference to the fact that, you know, the the adult learners, uh, you know, it's important to keep, you know, and maintain ongoing learning for the adults because they impact the learning of of our children. So, and that is very true. Um, we have to maintain our facilities to ensure that, you know, we are do, are we're proactively uh looking at, you know, um, you know, where we can make enhancements so that that, you know, those, over time, we're not sort of contributing to a large um uh capital project, but that we're doing these, you know, short term projects in terms of having some capital reserves uh to, because our properties, uh, you know, are a pretty significant uh investment and and also a major value in our, in the communities and they're associated with the values of of all the the homeowners. So our school system is very much a central part of the value that 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 the individual homeowners uh uh see in their own properties. Um, we also want to align as a budget goal, all of our fiscal planning to our long term initiatives. So we want to make sure that we're thoughtful and we're strategic uh with regards to, you know, all of the plans that we have, whether it's to increase programs, you know, from uh Hillside to the middle school or or, you know, make sure that we see, you know, continuity and alliance and coherence uh across K-12. In terms of slide uh number seven, in terms of budget realities, you've also heard a lot about budget realities. Um, and, you know, they are real, so we're we're not, you know, uh, kind of manufacturing a crisis, you know, that it's the reality that that we think about quite a bit, quite a bit. So additional mandates without financial relief is a a pretty common, you know, uh, reality in New York State, you know. So, you know, whether you're talking about COVID expenses at Maureen, and I talked about it uh last year, around the same time, actually. You know, we didn't know exactly what those were going to be, but they turned out to be, you know, quite significant and substantial. So those things do happen and we have to make sure that we provide for them and we can operate and in this case, you know, open our schools even with all of the safety, you know, apparatus and and protocols in place. Um, there's always going to be uncertainty in state aid and that there's not a more significant time that that's a reality even now with decreased and diminished taxes and income, you know, coming from restaurants and other businesses that have shut, been shut down, some since March, some open in very limited capacity. That's a major uh sort of uh uh impact or has had a major impact on the coffers at the state and that then has a trickle down effect when it comes to what, you know, individual districts receive. So we're always thinking about, you know, what that slide is going to mean for for, you know, for us. Uh, foundation aid has always been unfunded, you know, underfunded. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, it's part of that foundation aid, the calculation of the wealth formula uh as well as the calculation of the true expenses associated with, you know, educating children, you know, who may need more time in school. So whether it means, uh, you know, students who might need to be in this, in school um uh until the age of twenty-one, that would be some of our students with IAPs. We have English language learners who also uh have, you know, uh, the right to 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 be educated until, you know, uh, they're, you know, twenty-one as well in terms of, you know, uh, those services. So uh in in those, in a lot of cases, um, the state has not adjusted its wealth formulas. So we're getting what, you know, we're getting that would have been, you know, uh, attached to a demographic that perhaps is not as different as it, I mean, it hasn't changed. Uh, that that has certainly changed significantly from when the time and the formula was set. So that's a um always a major challenge for for us. And the COVID expenses, as I said, has been very, you know, has, you know, a significant impact on on us. And, you know, obviously, some of those we will not have to, you know, uh, budget for in the coming uh school year. But, you know, we we certainly uh can't necessarily rip the Band-Aid off completely. And so that's a big consideration with regard to what Maureen is going to share shortly. Uh, there's an uncertainty around the local revenue sources, including sales tax and interest income and and facilities usage. Uh, certainly, the programs that have, you know, used our buildings um regularly and often uh and have been a major, been a major source of of childcare um have, you know, not functioned at the level, not even close to what they used to function and operate at. As a result of, uh, again, the changes in school schedules, changes in families' work schedules and the the uh the need to be able to uh, you know, find, you know, resources, uh, you know, our families find resources that that fit the different kinds of schedules, you know, whether your children, you know, your child's schedule at Hillside is different from your child's schedule at um Farragut and the high school. So that's certainly been a challenge and it's, I'm cer- I'm certain um I made a big dent in the 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 bottom line for these really vital uh after school programs and services that are offered to our, to the children of the district. Um, changes in enrollment beyond our trend data, obviously, birth, library, birth data is is always a consideration. We always look at that information to make decisions, long term decisions. Uh, but we also have families who moved into the district, you know. I will get an email or two from a family, a family that's moved in uh and, you know, from, you know, whether it is from another area in New York State or or even abroad. And, you know, while, and we can't necessarily track that information, but yet, you know, we're, we certainly want to make sure that we have uh, you know, room and, you know, appropriate room and uh, you know, in our classrooms, wherever those children happen, you know, to need to be placed. And uh we always have to keep that in mind when we are, when we are planning. Um, we also want to make sure that we are always thinking about uh our students with IAPs. Those services vacillate. Again, they're driven by student needs. And there's no cookie cutter model. There's no one size fits all when it comes to students with IP. It's very individualized. Um, and while we we certainly want to, you know, recruit and bring in and attract, you know, tuition students, we also have out out of district tuition students. Um, and and that new enrollment is sometimes uh driven by the fact that we do have uh some really robust programs and we want to build robust, robust programs that attract um um students from other school districts, but also support our learners and, you know, in very rich and vibrant learning environments. And in order to attract, um, you know, tuition paying students, we have to invest in the professional learning of all the educators uh and and service providers who are associated with building those programs and making them attractive. So we do have to invest in order for us to attract and and that's a very important part of the the arena of 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 uh special education. Uh, and obviously, we we want to adhere to creating the least restrictive learning environment, not only because legally we should be doing that, but that's in the best interest of our students. It's a civil right of of students with IAPs. And we want to make sure that they're in environments where they feel a sensible longing, that they're participating, uh, that they are, you know, developing their capacity and independence and and being expected, you know, uh, to uh function, operate successfully, you know, and through their strengths, uh, and to go on and to whether it's a a continuous education upon graduation, uh, the world of work uh and and life. So uh it's a certainly a priority to make sure that, you know, there's always a a focus on making sure that students are prepared, you know, for success. Uh, the community has expectations for our schools, you know, class size, which we'll have a couple of slides, you know, in a in a second or two. You know, is one of those considerations. Um, we look at that information very closely to make sure that we are, you know, in line with national trends and obviously, the the community has some sense of what that should be. And we're always, you know, monitoring and looking at that at this point in time in the in the school years we make decisions. Um, the academic programs are important, you know, what what we aspire, you know, for our children to experience. You heard about the science research classes and the successes of those students, you know, it's very exciting to hear that. And those students uh have experiences because we have, you know, obviously, very talented educators here who are working and inspiring those children, but we also want them to compete. We want them to go out and to learn and to actually use what they're learning, you know, in, you know, in thought, in in very authentic context, which is to compete and share and apply what you're learning. So that's really exciting to hear about that in in many other examples. But uh it was, it's just serendipitous that we have, you know, that Ms. Amansky happened to have uh shared some very exciting work that Ms. Shandrop is doing in the science research program. Uh, the other programs, if the community has some expectations around that we continue and that we uh maintain, you know, the the adults associated with those programs and it's arts and art and music. We saw that last year, athletics and our electives. So uh there's a real value placed on the, how that benefits and stretches our students and exposes them to different opportunities. Electives are a way to try different things, you know, to explore beyond the things that you typically do, to meet other students, you know, to to sort of, you know, find those friendships and other venues. And athletics is 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 such an important uh experience for students. And I want to thank Mr. Windall, who's going to introduce the uh board uh resolution um shortly. Uh, in his efforts to, you know, and all the challenges associated with the athletic program, you know, he's really trying to uphold the value that the community has in our athletic program uh and make, and our students, obviously, you know, that derive a lot of benefit from from participating. So this has certainly been an unusual year in that regard, but it certainly is a, you know, one of the areas that we value because our community values it. And security and safety, obviously, is a major, you know, factor in 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 our budget considerations. We have to make sure that our, that the 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 buildings are safe. Um, we we practice drills to make sure that that happens. We make sure that we have all the appropriate equipment, whether it be cameras to be able to to monitor all the 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 areas uh on our grounds, inside and outside. Uh, we have a system for doing lockdowns, which is, you know, electronically programmed. We have security and safety, you know, at, you know, central locations in our buildings. So all of that is is really critical for ensuring that, you know, once, you know, the children and the adults are in the buildings, that we can ensure that they are there safe and also that our community, you know, can count on us to 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 make sure that's a priority. In terms of enrollment, going to slide ten, the enrollment projection data is so important. And then you can see, just by looking at the the first slide, which is the Hillside slide, you see the trajectory of increases in enrollment from uh the twenty twenty one school year to the twenty twenty five school year. And and that's so important as we think about staffing and whether we have to make sure we create another section and that we were prepared for that. So that's not something that we wait to discover in September. You know, it becomes a very critical part of of the conversation that we have now. And again, we uh we pay attention to that because that's a value in the community, as I alluded to earlier, to make sure that our class sizes, you know, are ones where, you know, we ha- we can, you know, offer the programs that we're offering and teachers can provide the kind of instruction that they need to provide uh and that we don't have, you know, environments that are that are are not conducive to students being able to to learn comfortably and for our uh teachers to be able to, and teacher assistants, aides and monitors to work comfortable comfortably in those environments. Uh, the next slide, eleven, is is another uh school class section si- slide, which is very important and and very uh sort of a a traditional information that we share with the with the community at this during this time with this budget presentation. So you'll see the cla- the average class sizes, you know, from kindergarten to fourth grade. And, you know, and 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 this is the, these numbers and this, these averages are really highly desirable and and optimal and what we want to see. And 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 when we look at the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year, you do see an increase. You know, you do see a slight change uh as we have, you know, more children, you know, who are coming into the system at different times, not just entering in through kindergarten, uh, but this is, this represents, you know, the trajectory that we have uh been accustomed to seeing. And of course, there are some re- some reductions that are associated with um decisions that some of our families have made, you know, to either put, you know, to homeschool their children or to make some other decisions uh while uh we were, you know, in sort of different model of of hybrid or in earlier, you know, uh in September and October, when we were really, you know, ramping up to make sure that we were ready to offer the 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 model of learning or instruction um that uh we were presented in our school reopening plan. In terms of uh Farragut Middle School, you'll see those enrollment injection uh projections as well uh from, and again, it's the same trend, uh, you know, there's an upward trend uh uh as uh up to year uh up to twenty twenty five. And again, that's so important for us as we think about, you know, the the professionals that we need to maintain the class sizes that our community values and that we're able to continue to to offer the the programming that uh we want to see, whether it be the introduction of a new courses, you know, in in, you know, science to build that that's, you know, that that STEM pipeline, you know, uh uh early on from kindergarten all the way up. Uh, and so uh paying attention to the class size, you know, uh class size and the enrollment projections is a really critical critical uh data point to keep our eye on. And then finally, uh slide thirteen is uh the enrollment projection for um for Hastings High School. Uh, again, that same trend upwards, uh where we are in twenty twenty one and where we expect to see ourselves in twenty twenty five. So that also represents some student growth. Uh, and and again, it it's also, um, you know, a acknowledgement that, you know, this, uh, you know, the the school system, you know, does a a really great job and that, you know, the the community is 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 happy in terms of, you know, you know, staying in the system and and, you know, from from entry uh kindergarten and until exit in in high school. And then for new ca- community members and new families to move into the district uh enroll and and enroll their children in our schools and that's, that's, you know, what you would have, you expect to see. And you want to, you know, continue to 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 make sure that that that's the the pathway forward is that, you know, what's happening in terms of our focus on what the community values and making sure that we, you know, uh, we monitor those things that matter. You know, uh, we'll continue to 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 grow uh the student enrollment and uh and 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 we have to continue to make sure that we're focusing on that as we develop our budget. Um, so with the next part of this presentation, Maureen is going to take us through uh slides fourteen to thirty eight um and getting into some of the more granular details and um uh, you know, the the components that are really critical in this phase of the the budget presentation. So turn it over to you, Maureen.
Okay, thank you, Valerie. So again, um, very similar to some of the items that uh we, Valerie kind of touched on earlier. The the major factors that impact our our budget each year are the following. And of course, this is a snapshot of of some of them and there are additional um impacts on our budget each year, but um the largest, of course, is our contractual obligations. As we have um spoken about at our Budget One O Ones and and in previous budget meetings, we are a people organization. We're a service organization. So the the largest expenditure, of course, is in our staff and our faculty. Um, and and because of that, our largest driver of our budget, of course, is the um the staff increases that are in each collective bargaining agreement. Um, in addition to that, we also have programs and and courses that we offer. And again, these are um items that in order to correctly fund them, do have an impact on our budget. Pension costs, again, we'll get um further into these in in later slides, our health insurance increases, state and federal mandates, as Valerie had mentioned, um and and many of which are unfunded, um, as well as enrollment class size, capital projects and debt. Um, so those are the major factors. Um, just to kind of give you a snapshot, um, of of this is this kind of what we would say is this, you know, starting July first, I'm coming from one fiscal year into the next. What are some of our um year over year increases? And um when we kind of say, just by rolling over kind of what we need, what is the cost of doing business from year over year? So um, as we mentioned here, without any new initiatives, the following budget variances occur. We have salary increases. Again, these are contractual obligations that I mentioned on the earlier slide. We have um costs for related services for students with disabilities. We have um many times an increase in our legal expenses because depending on what happened the previous year, there's going to be an increase in um in uh obtaining those services. Yeah, um, equipment needs, uh technology, infrastructure. Um, I think all of us know that technology rules everything and and not unlike any other business or in our own homes, there's a a lifetime for um technology and the useful life of that. And as we expand and and the use of that is so significant, that is um a large um ticket item that we do have to um budget for each year. Um, there are increases of the cost of services that we receive. B O C is this one area um in which we would see an increase as well as other type of services that we um contract for. The T R S and E R S here are um, that is our retirement system. One is for a teacher's retirement system and the others is our employee retirement system. And again, these costs are um given to us that we do not have a control over those. And and on the, for the last at least five plus years, we've been seeing a steady increase in the cost um in funding those. Um, our our current projected increase in our health insurance is three point nine percent. And again, that only speaks to the cost of the actual premiums, but doesn't also account for changes in um health insurance coverage that some of our employees may have. So if you have an employee this year that may be single, uh the next year they could have a family plan and that's two and a half times the cost of of what the plan they would have this year. So uh in addition, just to um, you know, moving everyone over, that there's also other increases. Um, I guess also increase costs in um some of our utilities, that not all occasion will have some decreases depending on rates. Um, and then an increase in debt service. So our push ahead um budget this year, when we kind of whittle down to what we kind of really understood, um, we were moving forward before we added anything additional, we were about one point three million dollars. So it just, um, and that's not adding one additional item to the budget. Um, so these are some items and and these are going to be um items that when we get into our more detailed budget proposals in in our, in the two March meetings, that um the individual principals and and different um uh budget uh managers will be able to kind of give you a little bit more insight into. But just, these are items that at with our current budget we're presenting today in our overview, these items are included in addition to those rollover costs. So um currently, our present budget proposal also includes a restoration of a one point oh F T science at at Hastings High School. Um, an additional one point oh F T at Hillside. And and if, um, I don't know if you remember on the previous slides when Valerie was going over the class sections, right now we are projecting an increase of one section at Hillside. And and again, when we get uh when each individual building level presents their enrollments and their programming, um, we'll we'll speak a little bit further on this. We are also um anticipating a need for a point two F T of mass supported Hillside. We currently have a point eight staff member, so the recommendation um is to increase that based upon, you know, the need of students to have additional mass support there. We are also um anticipating a need to increase our diversity coordinator, who is currently at a point six release time to make that a full time position. So that would require us to um hire another teacher to pick up her current assignment at that point four. Um, we are currently projecting a need for four um additional teacher aid positions district wide. And this is based on individual children's um I A Ps. We are also um have dollars in next year's budget for uh strategic planning work. And again, we are uh budgeting fifty five thousand and however we se- by securing that service through B O Cs, um, it would be about a net cost of thirty five thousand after the aid. So in our um budget overview tonight, in addition to our rollover costs, we're also projecting an additional six hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of spending. So, okay, so um as we were prioritizing um, sorry, the budget um adjustments, um, we we worked together with the administration and we wanted to maintain our commitment to our current initiatives. Where we were committed to the students' learning, um, especially their social emotional needs. And we want to focus, as we always do, on fiscal sustainability uh because certainly, I mean, last year was a very unusual year, but whatever we um add to the budget, we really have to think about long term. How how do we um continue to afford it so we don't end up adding something and then either um not being able to sustain that position long term? So we always consider that when we're um discussing adding expense to our budget. And as always, as part of um our uh process, we consider efficiencies. And and these are the areas in which we look. Personnel, of course, as I mentioned, is our largest part of our budget where we spend funding. Um, we do look at our supplies, contractual expenses and equipment. And uh as we've spoken about before in some of our Budget One O Ones, um, it really comes from a zero based budgeting standpoint. So everything, um, we do look at it with a fresh set of eyes and determine whether it's, um, or even if we had spent money on that, in the previous year, we do um uh start from a place of where we want to justify all of our spending when we're making uh recommendations. Um, again, Valerie just touched on this and this is a very short list of um a a few items that um are, there's many, many more. But when we talk a lot, you you'll hear us uh mention that through through different budget presentations, the idea of unfunded mandates. And again, um, all states have them. I believe New York probably has the most from my understanding. And and just some things that we are required to do. And again, there is no funding that um additional funding source that we uh receive money in order to do these things. So testing and scoring, of course, um, because of COVID this year, that is not something we're required to do. But um, you know, assuming that all the the tests are going to be required next year, this is an expense um um each year and we do uh in both um costs to uh paying B O Cs to help us with the scoring, but also the um personnel costs associated with with these type of um items, including testing, which a lot of our um staff spends a good amount of time administering. Um, Valerie had talked about uh safety and security and of course, you know, that is a priority for us, but there it is also uh many of the requirements under the um school safety um um by the state of New York are required and and we don't receive any uh additional funding in order to to ensure um compliance with that. Um, we've uh transportation, again, um, in district uh transportation, not so much, but out of district transportation is something that um we are required to provide. Um, doesn't have to be on busing, but we are required to to uh provide it for our private school students that live in the district. Tribe borough, um, we use this term, it really refers to the fact that um even if uh at the end of a fiscal year, the contract obligations that exist in our employee contracts um continue on, you don't, you don't have uh whatever is um increases that are in in that particular um contract, we are required to honor the following year. So um it's um just means that those kind of increases in costs are baked in there. Um, Valerie spoke about this also about um E N L, E L L and special ed requirements and much of it, um, including the fact that some students may have to be um educated to to the twenty one years old. That would be another um unfunded mandate kind of a thing. Um, and again, not to be ease to death, but lead and environmental testing is another um example of of things that we are required to do, but do not always receive, do not receive any money back on. Um, G A S B reporting, internal audits, uh translation of documents. So um there there's a much more comprehensive list, but just these are items that when we consider putting our budget together, we do have to factor in because we don't have an um an ability to decide not to do those things. Um, we've shown this graphic, we we, uh, excuse me, I just hit that. We did show it last year and again, it just is really an infographic and it really shows the um the the challenge in trying to balance um the things that we cannot control um as and on the left and we've just kind of gone over all of those, such as wage increases, retirement, our contributions and other type of benefits and the things we do have control of, which are really programs and class size and staffing level. Um, and this is, so, so the budget overview and we've been um looking, I've uh shown different examples of this at some Budget One O Ones and um where, as I, as I mentioned, we're going to be talking a lot about the budget for the next month or two and really unpacking um within these categories, um, the line by line items, so people have a better understanding of of how we spend our money. But um as Valerie mentioned, um, under the nuts and bolts part of the budget, these um definitions of appropriations are uh the way the uh state requires us to kind of uh group different uh categories of expense. So the four major categories of expense um in a in a budget uh document are broken into general support, instruction, um, transportation, and then the undistributed. And as we mentioned before, the majority of the undistributed portion of the budget is employed benefits, so um it, but it is again reported, uh, required to be reported separately. Um, so as you can see right um in the budget overview, right now, we are projecting our um budget increase for next year um to be about close to two million dollars. Um, as I had mentioned before, um, it's a breakdown of about one point three million of um just year over year expenses and then a recommendation currently of about six hundred and forty thousand dollars of um new new staff being hired. Um, the good news this year that at least on what we're being, um, the the most recent information we've received is that we are anticipating our state aid, um, a stated restoration for um not only for our projecting twenty one, twenty two school year, which um currently we're projecting about five point two million dollars, but we're also anticipating based upon um uh an update we received a few weeks back from the uh Department of Budget and and the Governor's Office, that based on the federal stimulus money that is um was earmarked for education, that we should receive um our 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 typical level of aid for this school year also. Um, the good news about that, of course, it's always good news to receive more money, but not only will that, of course, that was a a a big um help in in development of this current year budget, the anticipated revenue level for next year. But the fact that we budgeted uh based upon what we were told um at the time last year to anticipate a twenty percent reduction in aid, which in fact, if the federal government um didn't provide um stimulus money, we would be facing uh currently, that those additional dollars coming into the district this year, we are going to use those to offset next year's budget as well. So those additional dollars, and again, when we get into the really um into further detail of the revenue, I'll I'll show you how that kind of money is flowing into next year, but it is kind of flowing in through the appropriated fund balance. And that's currently how we're recommending, because again, that was not money we anticipated this year and we think considering we made some of those reductions last year, we're making the recommendation to appropriate that to twenty-one, twenty-two budget. The other, the other line items under the revenues again are miscellaneous receipts that, that is sales tax, interest income, some facilities usage, tuitions and things such as that, we are anticipating based upon what we're seeing, the, the sales tax numbers are coming back up thankfully, so again, we don't think we'll be at our free na- at nineteen, twenty levels, but we feel comfortable projecting an increase in those miscellaneous revenues next year. We are recommending a slight increase in our appropriated fund balance, again, much of that appropriated fund balance is coming from that additional state aid monies that we're, will be receiving this year. And we're also making a recommendation to appropriate six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the retirement reserve and a hundred thousand from our tax surcharge reserve. Our retirement reserve, just to remind those who may be listening tonight, is a reserve that the express purpose of its, of its existence is for times in which the district is seeing an increase in our, our pension obligations, so the state authorizes districts when they ha- they have some additional monies to be able to save and set aside for when districts are seeing these increases in the retirement system and that kind of helps us offset some of those increases by appropriating some revenues from that reserve, so again, it is an increase over what we appropriated last year, but we also are seeing an increase in the cost of those expenses, so we think it's appropriate to use some more dollars this year to, to help help smooth some of that increase. So what does that mean in terms of our property tax levy? So because of the fact that we're getting this restoration in state aid, it's really helping us bring that, that property tax levy, right now we're projecting it to be at tax cap compliant and we'll speak to the, with, with the formula is and would, and how we arrive at that amount. But currently we are projecting a need to levy an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of property taxes next year. And that would currently the, that's, that would be a projection of about one point five four percent increased individual taxpayers, homeowners. Um, again, just, just a reminder on the state aid, the number that we were showing this evening in that five point two million dollars that I spoke about, that's coming from the executive proposal, which is the governor's proposal that when he when he provides to everyone what, what he's anticipating to spend in, in each of the categories under the state budget. And currently the legislators are working with the, the governor and, and and like all of us, we're always advocating to our local legislators, things that we either find problematic and so, in the governor's proposal or items that we, you know, want to ensure that in terms of proposed changes in the state aid formula, or as Valerie had mentioned, we're always advocating for our full restoration of foundation aid, we, you know, this probably wouldn't be the year considering the challenges they're having, but again, this is the, the time in which they're negotiating with the final allocation of state aid will be. And then we do find out our final state aid number by April, but the good news is that the current number we're projecting typically is lower than after the legislators negotiate with the governor, usually that number could even go up slightly, it doesn't go up significantly. Again, just to, to remind everyone in, in the state aid twenty twenty-one where we were last year at this time, initially pre-pandemic, the governor was projecting our aid to be five point four million dollars last year. And then of course, the pandemic hit and, and we were warned of the significant losses that New York State was projecting and, and their ability to close those funding gaps would, would need to be achieved by reducing monies in all, all areas of their spending and they warned at that time based upon projections of state revenues, the twenty percent reduction. At that time, we, we adjusted our budget accordingly. And, and, and as the year has progressed, because of the the, the monies now that they're, they're being earmarked by the federal government, we anticipate that our, our actual revenues this year would be about five point one million. It's important just, a- as we think about moving forward, you know, New York State is far from out of the woods and even if the federal government which I believe that they're, you know, we know for next year, there's a commitment to ensure that we get our full funding, but I think you know, the concern is then the year after that, will the state be able to recover in order to ensure that we're made whole in, in future out years. And as Valerie had spoke about, you know, certainly we, we're looking to build next year's budget, but we do look at, at a multi-year plan because, you know, certainly we, we do have to worry about, you know, a multi-year revenue projection. So again, any, as, as I had mentioned earlier, any additional revenues that we received this year over what we have projected last year are going to be used to offset next year's budget. So the money does come back to, to help us offset those increases. Now in terms of our projected budget, again, we're, we're projecting it based upon what the governor's executive proposal was in January. If you, if you look at the runs, the reason sometimes you may look at a run and it says a certain amount, some of, of those projections are based upon a expense amounts that the governor believes will be spending this year, so we do have to do our own analysis of that and then put in a, a number that we think that based upon the current formula will, will actually receive and, and I've done that. Our current state aid revenues, I think we all know this, are down significantly from previous years. Just shortfalls or required reductions in state aid and federal relief is necessary to, to provide full aid. There is some talk about if there's additional monies that the federal government gets to the state, so if that were to occur, we may possibly, as I had mentioned, get a few more dollars i- in that projection for next year. So again, this was just something we spoke about and, and just, I think it's as important as, like I said, not necessarily to, to, I think next year based upon the federal dollars, we should be okay, but really just thinking about the long-term effect on the state and, you know, how, when there is a reduction as we, we experienced last year, you know, how does a district handle, handle that when there's any type of loss of a significant source of funding? And as I, you know, we spoke a, a lot about last year, when there is a reduction of funding, it's one thing if it's a one-year situation and you, and you're pretty confident that, that it, it's a, a one-time reduction in funding. Then, then using, you know, fund balance to kind of plug that hole for one year, but, but we do have to think about long-term, if, if there's things we want to add to our budget. Those are items that you cannot use fund balance necessarily because it, it's not going to always be there, so you know, we, we spoke a lot about this and it's just like a reminder as we think about our out years that there is a time in which we do have to, as we spoke about with the budget one-on-ones, to increase our, our tax base in order not to, anytime there's a change, a change in state funding for, to make us so vulnerable that we have to make, make large reductions. And this was, again, not something we're, we're suggesting tonight, we are presenting to the board a budget that is actually tax compliant. But we did share this information at a budget one-on-one, just, just just so as we think about the out years, when we do go over the levy, like what is the increase, sometimes cutting two or three hundred thousand dollars from our budget i- is, is, is very difficult for us, but the the, i- it may even be like a half a percent, so we just have to if, if there is any type of change in, in future years, we really just have to consider our strategy in addressing it and, and how we just, I'm sorry, this computer is very sensitive, how we're going to address any loss in funding. This graphical representation, and, and we say this every year, but just a reminder, we are a service business and eighty percent of our overall budget is spent on our employees in both their salaries and benefits. And again, this is a, a little further broken down and we'll get definitely more into the details because at the next budget, we will then in each of these categories, break down the ten or twenty lines or sometimes in some cases more that, that make up each of these function areas, but just for tonight and I'll, I'll just you know, certainly the board can ask questions, we can always go back to slides if you had a particular question on, on, on a particular increase, I, I can, you know, definitely answer. But just to kind of show you some of the projected changes and I can kind of at a very high level, you know, give you what, what would be the main driver of that, so under the Board of Education, obviously nobody on the Board of Education draws a salary, but again, we are required to break down our expenses in a certain way. Under that category, beyond the district clerk that, that i- is paid a stipend to do the work of, of the board, our participation, our policy, our, the, we, there's different participations that we have, like different memberships for the Board of and when I say Board of Ed, it's really for the district, including our policy on review. As well as our annual vote, which again, we do have to pay election inspectors and, and things such as that, and the driver in there is mostly just due to contractual services and an increase for the district clerk. The chief school administration, that is the superintendent's office and the support staff that works in there. And again, we are seeing just a contractual, these are contractual increases. Finance, that is the people in my department and it's also the audit and all those different services we spoke about, we are required to have three different auditors in the district and, and that's also captured in that category as well as different professional services for compliance such as our four oh three B provider. Gatsby reporting, which is another kind of financial type of reporting, so all those type of services are also in there and again, there's people that work in the finance department that are in the union and that just represents their contractual increases. Our legal personnel and public info, and when we get further into this, just I, you know, just to kind of highlight, you see a, a large increase there, it's really just a shift in how we currently now are using a contract for our public information and that is a BOCs service, so we are going, although it's, it's truly not an increase, it's that the person who was handling that for us before was an employee and their employee benefits were in a, a different part of the budget. So it is in fact, the same amount of money, dollars we're spending in that area, it's just the way it's budgeted is a little bit different and again, when we show the line-by-line, I'll, I'll be able to demonstrate that a little bit more clearly for, for folks. Operations and maintenance, again, the majority of this increase is being driven by contractual increases as well as utility increases. And when Mr. Marteron is here that, the evening, I believe in the first or the second March meeting, we will again drill down into the increases in that, that particular area. The special items, that's our, the majority is our liability insurance. Boat, a participation in BOCs, which again is not optional, we are BOCs component district, even if we did not spend one dollar in a BOCs service, we are required to pay into the administrative and capital expenses as a, as a, a district that's within the Southern Westchester BOCs area. The majority of this increase here is being driven by an increase in insurance and as well as an increase in, in the cost of that cost that BOCs put passes along to us, and again, we will explain a little further in our detailed meetings. Sorry, okay, um, again, just at a very high level curriculum office, again, that's Melissa Semansky, that's our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. And the expenses there are, are mostly contractual increases as well as some there are other items that run through that office such as some professional contracts for the district. Supervision, that's the principals, all the principals at every building and their secretarial staff. Again, contractual increases, if you see any increase in here, it's all driven on the contractual increase. In the area of teaching, as I had mentioned before, we are making a recommendation to add to teaching positions next year as part of our budget proposal. A special education mostly being driven by the individuals who work in that department's contractual increases, as well as I had mentioned earlier, a recommendation for, for additional aids. And there are, under all these categories, some increases in some line items and some decreases, so that's where we're getting these net increases, but again, we will be able to really unpack that in future meetings, media and technology, the same thing, I spoke a little bit earlier about, you know, the need for those infrastructure needs, there's also some additional software resources that we've began to use this year and are recommending to continue to use next year, and again, we will unpack those increases. The guidance department is, is for our guidance, all of our guidance offices and, and any contractual increases related to those offices. Nursing and medical, well, this year, as, as many of you are aware, we did increase our nursing services for very obvious reasons because of the the need to have multiple nursing offices, operational in both buildings. At this point initially, in the beginning of our budget process, we weren't sure, you know, what the needs would be in the system, but you know, trying to make decisions and, and restore positions next year, we are recommending to go back to just our, our flat staffing level and decrease the amount of nurses that we did have in there this year. Now, it may be a bit confusing because you, there is still showing an increase, but that was our approved budget, we actually ended up spending a lot more and when we do our act our actuals during our, our detailed budget presentation, then you'll see those, those, those changes there. And, and again, the rest of the items are really, on this page are all driven by just contractual increases and when our budget managers are here, they will walk you through what they're anticipating under all those areas. And again, transportation, right now, with our addition, we, we did really combine a lot of our external routes this year and we are projecting that we'll be able to continue to make those more efficient in our out-of-district busing, I mean, this year we're actually spending a lot less than that because some, some students actually decided to go fully remote. But in terms of anticipating next year, we, we have another district that has joined our consortium and we really have seen some good efficiencies on some of our out-of-district routes and, and we hope to continue and even possibly get that number lower. I'm sorry, this, so again, we'll be talking about this in more detail, but, but this was a big driver of our budget this year. Even a slight change in the percentage of the retirement system, a slight increase to the overall percentage they charge us, but when you're talking about that number being on you know, twenty-five million dollars with the salaries, i- it, it can be, you know, one percent additional is, is a considerable increase for us and and also beyond the percentage increase of the rate we have to pay, our, our salaries go up each year, so i- it's the two of those are what drive this this change and, and increase year-over-year, so again, we're right now projecting about two hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase in costs and just our retirement system contributions and, and I had mentioned earlier that because of that, we're recommending using some dollar, more dollars out of the reserve to help us will offset some of that increase. Social Security again, because this year we were, our budget, we had a couple extra dollars there, so we don't, we kind of based on the actual, we, we had a very small increase there. We are actually our workers' comp, where I'm hoping that's going to be enough dollars there, we are seeing, the last few years, we've had an increase in, in our our, our claims, I mean, it, it does happen and, and this, this number is based on actual expenditures, so you know, I'm hoping that i- it's not more significant than that, but I am projecting about twenty thousand dollar increase there based upon what, what our experience rating is. Again, this life and unemployment, the, this increase here is really being driven by, we're seeing a significant increase of our, in our unemployment this year. Although we established an unemployment reserve last year, which has been, will, will definitely help us out because our unemployment expenses are about ten times what we normally pay in, in unemployment and be, being as a school district, unlike a private company, we don't pay a percentage of our payroll taxes, we actually pay our actual expenses and that's typical of school districts, it's actually most of the time it works out well, but in a year such as this year, we're seeing a, a huge increase in what we're paying out in unemployment. Unemployment has made it very easy for people to collect benefits, so even if you've had people who just subbed into your district a few times, they're actually, we're in, in some cases, we, we do have to also pay unemployment claims for those individuals. Health insurance, as I spoke earlier, we're, we're seeing about a close to four percent increase there. And then the employee assistance, which is again, um, it's, uh, it's something we've always participated in and we're, we're not anticipating an increase in cost there. Then, then with the debt service, so, um, as, as we all speak about often, we have, um, we're in the middle of, um, about halfway or half, more than halfway through, um, the process of, of our, uh, capital bond, um, project. And this year, um, we, we were in need as we, um, are at this part of the, of the project, we need to issue some debt. And we are issuing a ba- a bond anticipation note this year, um, for, to help finance that work. And we are projecting the expense, the interest expense for that issuing issuance to be $80,000 next year. So that's contributing to the, um, increase there in our debt service. Um, again, this is, uh, a little bit more of a detail of our revenue overview. This is a breakdown of, of some of those categories I kind of, um, mentioned earlier in those other categories. So, right now, um, just to kind of the, the changes here, just to kind of highlight, um, we spoke a little bit earlier about our custodial fees, as Valerie had mentioned, many of our out, um, are the individuals who use our buildings, as you know, many of their programs have been pretty much decimated this year. And because of that, uh, we had a decrease in, um, what we actually charge these programs. And again, not knowing whether they'll be able to, um, you know, what the case is going to be next year. We are projecting that revenue to be a reduction. Cause again, when we put together the budget at that point, we didn't really know that, uh, we, we didn't anticipate that, um, tho- those programs would be, um, experiencing such hardships, I guess, at that time, or we didn't factor that, that into our budget planning last year. But we, we are this year, um, because, you know, at this point, I, I believe we've only collected about 10,000 this year out of the 50 we projected. Um, day school tuition, where, um, we, we see that as being about flat, the same amount of students based on projections. Uh, tuition of the district similar, again, you, you have to be very careful, although currently this year we are projected to, I believe, um, uh, the actual revenue amount for that category may be closer to four, 400 plus. But again, that, that could be one student and we, we, um, it is, we have to be very, um, careful in projecting those amounts because any change in, uh, a student placement, you know, we, we can't, uh, over project tho- those revenues. Um, interest, I think that's itself explained where we know the interest, you know, is really paying not much, but we are anticipating, uh, about $30,000, similar to what we're earning this year. Um, and, and everything else other than, um, down to state aid, um, and, and of course, sales tax I had mentioned earlier, we're anticipating a restoration there because we're, we're seeing it trending in that way. Um, state aid is the big, the big item here that we're almost seeing a million dollars, um, in a year over year, what we're anticipating from a budget standpoint. And, uh, we feel good about that, that dollar amount. And, um, you know, there may be a potential that could be slightly higher, but I think, you know, based upon where we are, we feel comfortable projecting that, uh, 5.2 million. And, and as I had mentioned, we're also making a recommendation to, um, and we've talked a lot about this and it'll be a discussion, um, throughout the budget process. You know, really the use of, of fund balance and reserves. And, and although we do have to be very mindful of this practice, we felt this year, you know, with the, um, continued challenges we're having, we wanted to be mindful and in presenting a budget that was tax cap compliant. Although, you know, we, we, we need to also be mindful of, um, that the reserves that we do have to kind of not, oh, you know, overly, we can't overly depend on them because they're not going to be there, um, in the, always in the future. So, um, you know, that will, we'll talk a little bit about that, we'll talk about that in, um, further detail at upcoming budget meetings. So again, um, our revenues and our expenses have to be, um, they have to, uh, balance out. Um, we have to present a balanced budget to the board and to the community. And, um, as you can see here, we are projecting our revenue in, um, year over year to be that 1.9 million dollars. Some, um, the same amount that we are increasing our expenses by. Um, this again, this is just a little bit of budget history. We did present this slide last year and we just kind of wanted to show, um, to kind of, uh, on the, uh, on both sides, we have our budget increase, but our, our increase, our tax rate increase over the last four years, um, really is, you know, I think, although I know any increase is, is a burden to, 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 to our, um, our residents, we really do try to be mindful and, and when we are projecting this. And, and as you can see by this slide, you know, over the last four, I won't even count the ones that were negative. We really have, um, we're about 4% over a four-year period. So, you know, we're averaging about 1% a year. So although there was an increase in some of those budget increases, we also did have a, a large increase in our assessed valuation, which, um, meant that the actual effective tax rate increases have been about 1% a year, if you average them over the four years. And again, just, um, we, you know, do, do, we try to be mindful of, um, of that. And, and, and as we talked about before, we look at sustainability, um, you know, we, we try to keep that in mind as we're, um, projecting our budgets as well. And again, that's just a graphical representation of what I just spoke about. So we talk a lot about the tax, tax cap. Um, again, as a reminder, the tax cap, um, was, uh, we're living about in the seventh, eighth year of the tax cap legislation. And, um, the, the thing with the tax cap that, that's challenging is that, you know, it's one thing if it was a flat 2% each year or if your expenses were, um, or, or if it counted in the fact that you have expenses that could exceed that or enrollment increases or other expenses that go beyond that. Um, but, you know, thankfully, since the inception of the tax cap, in, including this year, we are presenting budgets that are tax cap compliant. Um, but I, this year was particularly challenging. One of the reasons especially is because our allowable growth factor this year is not, um, this kind of idea that it's 2%, it's not 2%. And, and in fact, this year, when it was released, um, I think initially we were projecting one and a half percent. And when it actually came out, it was 1.123%. So, oh, excuse me, 1.23%. So, you know, any, any fraction of this number below 2%, just to kind of, um, if it was 2%, we would have had about another close to $400,000 in our levy or 350,000. So it is significant, again, when you're trying to balance a budget, you know, it doesn't seem like a big, a change in, in what the tax cap calculation is, but it i- it is a large impact on the district, um, when you, when we're dealing with such a low, um, year to year increase. So again, this, this is just the, um, a Snapchat of the way we get to that calculation. And, and we, to have an understanding of what, uh, our increase can be under the, uh, formula. And the formula, um, there are different components of it, um, including a tax-based growth factor. And on a, the, there's some additional slides that we have beyond this and they kind of explain what that term means. And, and we'll talk about that, um, just briefly. Um, and then pilots, I, and some of these other items that are either added in or deducts under the formula. But what, what that meant for us, once we did the full calculation is that our tax levy, um, which is not the tax rate, it's our tax allowable levy limit could not exceed an increase of 1.71% um, year over year. And again, our current budget that we're presenting this evening is in fact, is tax cap compliant. And as I just mentioned earlier, just to kind of remind everyone the challenges of doing so, our, our rollover budget was, as I had mentioned, about 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. And just, you know, if, if more or less things didn't change much from last year in terms of, you know, staff and personnel and, and, um, you know, student needs, that, that's our increase year over year without deciding to spend one more dollar. And then you can see that the tax cap was only going to allow us to spend 751,000. So those two numbers, they don't add up. And had it not been for that restoration of state aid, we would have, no, i- it, that could have been a, a, a real challenge for us if the federal government hadn't, um, earmarked money to schools because that would have just made that, um, uh, this, we would have been looking at a deficit model. Again, the allowable growth factor, and I, I don't, I, I think it's just important to have these on site. So when people are reviewing it and they, they hear us talk about this terminology, just kind of explains what that actually means. But as I had mentioned before, and the reason there's that cross out on that 2% is, I, I think, um, an issue in the tax cap was floated, this idea that it would be 2% in most districts, although it's, you know, still fairly low, could live if it was just a flat 2% each year. But since the inception, there, there's times in which it's like 1% point, you know? So when you have contracts and other obligations, just like I said, the health insurance, I know that's a, uh, not our entire budget, but you have expenses that are growing at sometimes double, triple, which are allowed to increase your levy by. So again, it, it's, it's extremely challenging to do so without a lot of times cutting things because that's the only way you could stay tax cap compliant. Um, again, the tax, these are just kind of definitions of some of the terms that I used earlier. So again, um, we, you know, we, if anyone has any questions, I, I can, you know, explain a little bit more, but it's just so as, as if somebody's looking back at the slide deck later and they see these terms that this kind of explains what those, um, different, different items are. Again, that's our tax base goal factor. Um, I could probably list more challenges than this, but this is again, just a, a kind of a list, just to kind of, um, capture some of the items I mentioned tonight in terms of our tax cap challenges. Um, number one, tax cap is tied to the levy increase and not the overall increase in the budget, meaning it's not allowing you to increase your entire budget 2%, but rather a portion of the revenue side of your budget. So again, as that even translates to expenses, it's even, even if the tax levy increases 2%, your allowable increase in your expenses is less than that, um, because it's not the entire budget. The tax cap doesn't take into account that most expenses are increased significantly higher than the average CPI. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, the majority of our budget is based, is spent on salaries, is spent on our people who are, who are service industry. Um, our salary schedules in, in many of our collective bargaining agreements were established, um, prior to a tax cap error. Um, where, where the, the, the idea that the, the percentage increase be, between steps, there wasn't, you know, you just, whatever it needed to be to, um, pay for those things, that's what you, you know, we were putting up each year in our budget increase. And, you know, in some instances, those, um, for us, uh, without a cost of living increase can range from close to 2% to almost 5%. So again, that those are just baked in increases that are in our contracts. Um, individual student needs are not factored into a tax cap compliant. Um, you know, a, any child, any child in the system, they, they may come in, they may be a new student and the needs that, to educate them may be, um, significant. And there is no exclusion or an ability to add that, you have to do that within whatever your allowable cap is. And again, unanticipated expenses, uh, anything, uh, you know, one example of course is building repairs. But if there was, um, I mean, I know that of course this wouldn't be the tax cap limit, but you know, things break. Uh, you know, Joe, the other day with all the snow, he's like, you know, what, we need probably new plow, not a new truck, but just things break. And, you know, there's expenses, uh, or building, as Valerie said, it's, uh, you know, we have, um, large amounts of property that we have to maintain. And if you had an unanticipated expense, that's not something that you just have to kind of figure it out within what you're allowed to levy. So again, it, it makes it extremely challenging, uh, wh- when putting together a, a budget for eighteen months in advance. Um, and, and that really concludes our overview for tonight. Valerie and I, you know, wanted just to kind of give you a sense of where we were, what, what are those kind of, um, items that we are, um, right now projecting to, um, add to, to our current budget. And then, um, again, well, we're going to break it down and have our budget managers come on two different dates so that there'll be an opportunity to, for a lot of Q and A, um, during those days. So, um, we have our, our next two, um, budget presentations are March 10th and the 22nd. Um, again, just some key dates, the board adoption of the budget, um, right now as it stands will have to happen on April 21st. And, um, unless there's a change as there was last year, but I, I don't anticipate that. We, uh, would be then, um, having a budget and trustee vote on May 18th. We're not quite sure if that will happen in person or, um, through absentee ballot. But again, as of right now, these are the, still the key dates. Um, Valerie and I had discussed, we definitely want to plug in maybe between the two March meetings. And that, another kind of budget 101, an opportunity for, um, residents to be not so much a presentation format, but just to maybe put some key ID, ideas down on some slides, but really to have a conversation and allow, um, a lot of Q and A. Um, in addition to the, you know, obviously they can, uh, residents can always do that at board meetings, but we really want to, um, you know, engage the community, um, a- as we always like to do. And, and we felt that may be a nice way just to kind of, if people have, we could get questions in advance or, you know, whatever people may, may, um, want more details on. So, um, that date's not listed here, but I, we spoke today, I think Valerie, we talked about it being, um, the week in between those two dates. And we'll determine a date that we think will, you know, work best for us that week. Um, but I, that, that's it for this evening. I don't know if, um, there's any questions about what was presented tonight or?
Thank you, Valerie and Maureen. Um, I don't, I, I think that I firstly want to say, uh, you know, the, the amount of effort, um, to put all this overview together. Thank you so much for preparing. It was very thorough and, you know, to, to any end that you could provide, um, the community a date for engagement on the budget, I think that would be really appreciated because, um, you know, this, this presentation was really, it doesn't give, um, you know, any of those that are participating now in the public right now, an opportunity to ask questions directly. Of course you can follow up by contacting, um, the district with any questions, but having a, a public meeting, um, to engage on it would be helpful. But do any, um, board members right now have questions, um, or, or thoughts, um, based on the presentation of Valerie and Maureen to share?
Yeah, I just have, um, a question for Maureen. When, so when do you, um, when do you anticipate to have, uh, a sense of, um, what, uh, what the state will be, uh, giving back moving forward or, or is that locked in at this point or?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it's pretty locked in. So, um, when the, when this, the governor, um, even prior to the runs coming out, uh, on the last stimulus bill, we knew that the, uh, federal government had earmarked, um, a lot of monies back, uh, specifically for, um, K-12 education. So in terms of, that was really addressing the restoration for this year. But then once, um, we, we were able to see the governor's runs and, and I participated in a few meetings with, um, folks from like that, that are working at the state level to kind of assist districts and, and understanding what the, um, you know, i- is this, is this based upon like, you know, the state's coffers and, and, uh, there, there was kind of a breakdown and kind of showed where the different, um, that, that in fact, we can anticipate that 5.2 million. I think the question is, is there, if there will be, I don't think it'll be significant, but there's some talks about whether, um, I think there's, uh, an acknowledgement that many districts, including Hastings, that there was some, although there was some cost savings discern, maybe some areas, um, such as transportation, we, we all incurred a lot of COVID-related costs. So, um, I guess there's even, as I mentioned earlier, there could be a potential, we could get a few more dollars in state aid. But I think what we really tried to do is use what the governor's runs were, um, knowing that that, that money, um, is something that we can, um, feel comfortable that we're going to receive. So, um, as time goes on, if there's an update or any additional, uh, funding, we'll, we'll be, you know, presenting that as well, um, throughout, throughout our, our, uh, budget presentations. So, but, uh, we're comfortable this evening, um, and, and a lot has changed. I think when we even started our budget 101s at that time, of course, we didn't know, um, with great certainty what those not, dollars would be. And that was really in the last maybe month or so where we got real clarification around that.
And I guess, uh, some kind of federal stimulus would, would change things as well?
Yeah. So I think the, the, there, if the state is, has been a lot of talk about, you know, that there's been money earmarked for, for schools in particular, but the states themselves, um, you know, are also in need of some, um, money. So that's where I, I think if, if there's more money that flows to the state, you know, there could be potentially some more dollars that we see. Um, you know, there, last year we were being projected at 5.4 million. So our current projection is a little bit less than that. So that's where, you know, there, there could be room for a few more dollars. But I think, um, I think right now, you know, we're very comfortable in projecting that 5.2 million. And then if there are any additional dollars, I, I will say the one thing that I, I just want to mention just very briefly, um, in speaking to the legislators, um, not only myself, but, but many school districts throughout New York State in particular, are asking for at least a one-year, uh, relief, um, on the tax cap calculation. And when I say relief, it's not that it goes away, but rather that they make it a, a true 2%. And, um, if that is something, I mean, there's, I don't know whether the, they will be successful, but, um, you know, some, some are suggesting there may be a willingness from the government. you know, some, some are suggesting there may be a willingness from the governor because of the under, understanding that districts spent a significant amount of money in, in being able to reopen schools that allowing us to have a flat 2% instead of that 1.23% would, would help us. And, and I think if that were to be the case, if there is, if that becomes part of the governor's final proposal, which again, isn't necessarily them giving us more money, I, I would make the recommendation that we do, um, then maybe pull back some of our reserves and, and increase our levy that, that, but again, that's, those are some details that we won't know for another month or so until the legislators kind of, they're going to continue that conversation with the governor. So that, that, that's the one piece sort of related to state aid. I wanted to just throw out there this evening as well.
Yes, thank you, Maureen and Valerie everyone else who's not on this call.
There's a lot of people.
To put this together. I know the first version we saw this budget, you know, had a significant piercing of the tax cap, and this has been a big juggle to put, uh, to put this together. And it's not done yet, but, um, but we really appreciate all the time and energy.
I can add to the comment. I'm sorry. I can add to, to the comment that Maureen made about the state legislators. I think I had an opportunity to meet with Senator Andrea Stewart-Cusness this past weekend. Um, you know, I, I spoke on behalf of our district and there were other folks from the region speaking to her about our needs and it's, it's very clear to our state legislators that the CARES Act for a district like ours did very little impact to offset the costs and the needs that we were incurring in terms of COVID. So we really do have, um, you know, a team of legislators that are, that are knowing what our needs are. So hopefully with the session within the next month. That's not to say that we can totally rely, we should keep speaking up, but that they, they really do understand that, um, however, they can, um, you know, work with the governor to make more funds available, whether it's through federal stimulus or this adjustment to the tax cap. I think, um, you know, this is a time where he's, uh, there's reception to what school districts are, are needing right now.
Yeah, I'm actually meeting, my colleagues and I are meeting with all the legislators on Friday and you know, we, we really try to pare down because we know it's important for them to have, you know, not have a laundry list of things to bring back to the governor, but to really focus our energies on the, the two, two or three things we think are going to be the most impactful for us. And, and, and as you said, I think they, they definitely always listen to us, but we also have to make sure that we're, uh, you know, kind of, kind of giving them a clear direction because it, it is difficult when there's so many needs that, um, just to kind of help focus those efforts. So we're hoping that they'll be able to get us on some relief on some of the items that we're, um, you know, bringing to them.
Well, thank you, Valerie and Maureen. So we'll be hearing much more detail as the, the weeks go forward in terms of the budget. And we can move on to our business items. I thought that since Mr. Wendell has persevered on the call so far that we should do the business items in reverse order and move to item B first. And so this is the resolution for participation in high-risk sports. I don't know, Mr. Wendell, thank you so much for joining us this evening and for preparing this and preparing the documents that went along with it, that the board has a chance to review. If you wanted to speak on the resolution, we welcome that.
Hi, everyone. I hope, can you guys all hear me? All right. I hope you're all doing well. I want to thank you in advance for your consideration of approving the resolution for participation in the following high-risk sports. Girls JV and varsity basketball, boys JV and varsity basketball and varsity ice hockey. Unfortunately, based on the consultation with the local DOH and our medical director, the risk factors for wrestling is too significant to offer this season. Um, as you know, this pandemic has negatively affected many people, including our student athletes and coaches. Everyone is struggling daily to find some sort of normalcy and joy throughout all of this. Then all of a sudden, when the governor announced and the DOH approved that we could start high-risk sports, that sense of excitement and sense of hope filled the air, not only for the student athletes and coaches, but communities everywhere. Of course, there is nervousness and apprehension on whether the schools can pull it off safely or whether playing athletics is worth it during a pandemic. Um, I want to say to you tonight that I'm extremely confident that we could pull it off safely. And yes, it is worth every minute of time spent preparing to provide our student athletes and coaches a chance to participate in sports they love. The mental and physical health benefits alone are worth it. I have been in constant meetings with the, with NISFR and the Section One Athletic Administrators Association to discuss, plan and update our 2020, 2021 COVID reentry plan for interscholastic athletics. We have used this plan successfully to provide a safe, rewarding fall season and currently going strong with our winter indoor track season. With your approval, as required by the DOH compliance, we could add basketball and ice hockey to that list. I've provided you with, with many of our COVID safety protocols and procedures, as well as all the documents needed for approval to start with practices as early as tomorrow afternoon. We are ready. Hopefully you had an opportunity to review everything in advance. They have posted on the athletic website and distributed throughout the community via Hastings Daily Community Outreach Communications. However, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me at this time.
Drew, it's Jody.
Hey, Jody.
How are you? Big day for you yesterday. I know. Is there any downside to doing this that you can think of?
No, I, you know, I, I know that we're, we're in COVID, so that's the downside. But with everything that we, we have taken advantage of and, and all the protocols we put in place, I can only see the positive that it is right now. We'll make it as safe as we possibly can for the, for everyone that's involved, the, the students, staff. And who are, you know, and we're going to follow all the regulations and we'll be ready to go.
And what about kids whose parents don't want them to play sports?
Well, playing, uh, playing sports is, um, it's not a requirement, you know, it's, it's, it's their own, their choice if they want to play sports or not. So if the students, you know, are, are nervous to play, they don't have to join this year. They have, they're, they're going to be filling out a, the waiver and the code of conduct. And I gave them a lot of information of the health risk to the parents. So that way they're well informed to make their own decisions.
Thank you.
So they, are they wearing masks during this or like when I watch?
Yeah, they have to wear masks the whole time. So that's the, you know, we did it in the fall. They played all their sports with masks on. It takes a little time to get used to. It's obviously not ideal, but COVID is not too ideal right now, but we, you know, the section went, we, we went up and beyond to make sure that it's the best, the safest situation that we could do.
Uh, Drew, thank you very much for that presentation. I'm, uh, I'm fully on board with this, but I'm thrilled the governor gave the go-ahead that our district now has the backing of the scientists and the educators all the way down to our, our teachers. We've seen these students, not all of them, but some students need this balance in their life. Social emotional learning includes academics and includes physical education. And I'm thrilled that you guys are able to put this together. I wish you the best. I hope this passes.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Wendell? Is there a motion to approve the resolution for participation in high-risk sports?
So moved.
And a second. All in favor? Well, Mr. Wendell, it has passed.
Thank you so much. You, you won't regret it. The kids are going to really appreciate it. And I can say on behalf of the students, the coaches staff and the athletic department that we really are grateful that you've given us this opportunity.
Your best wishes to all the athletes.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to figure out how to live stream it. So you guys get, you have to watch. It's requirement, actually.
Thanks for hanging around so long.
Uh, no problem. I better get out of here before I set off all the alarms.
You might have to sleep there, Drew. And talk to, I have a, talk to you tomorrow about live streaming. You just reminded me. I got some information today.
All right, excellent. Yeah.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you for everything.
Next time you guys could warn me, these go a little late. It's my learning experience. I learn so much every day, but I really appreciate.
Thank you for your dedication, Drew, to all of this. I know you've been working tirelessly to try to make sure that between section one and the New York State Athletic Program, as well as the Health Department regulations, all, you know, sort of come together in service to students. So thank you so much for your tireless efforts, you know, to make sure that our athletes get an opportunity to participate. So.
No problem. I, I'm excited to get it, to finally see him playing again. So I can't wait. But all right, well, everyone have a nice night. Um, it was good seeing you all and I'm sure you'll see some good things coming from the athletic department soon. Have a nice night.
Drew, bye-bye.
All right, we'll move on to the next business items. There are business items one through 16. This is going back to business items A. One through 16. Are there any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Is there a motion to approve business items A, one through 16? And a second. All in favor? Any opposed? And any abstentions? We'll move on to personnel. We're looking at the appointments one through nine. Are there any questions or comments regarding the appointments one through nine? Is there a motion to approve the appointments A, one through nine?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor? There are amendments, a number of them. This is amendments B, one through nine, which are appointments, and then amendments one through four, which are leaves of absence. Are there any questions or comments regarding amendments one through nine or amendments then following one through four? Is there a motion to approve all the amendments listed under amendments B? And a second.
Second.
All in favor? We'll move on to leaves of absence. Uh, there are three listed. Are there any questions or comments regarding leaves of absence one through three? Is there a motion to approve leave of absence, uh, one through three?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor? And a resignation. Uh, one resignation is there? Are there any questions or concerns regarding this resignation? Is there a motion to approve the resignation listed? Don't move. And a second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. There are minutes. Hold on. Minutes attached for the Board of Education meeting from July 25th, 2021. Are there any questions or concerns regarding these minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Education meeting from January 25th, 2021?
So moved.
And a second. All in favor? There is that facilities committee update. Maureen?
I was trying, I was trying to just pull up the, um, the report and I'll just go over it extremely quickly. So, I'm sorry. So this, this evening, really the, the main, uh, objective, we, we first started our meeting and we just really reviewed again where we were in terms of the, uh, facilities. You see my screen? Is everyone seeing my screen or you're not right now?
Not yet.
It is attached in board docs.
Yeah, I just, I know what I got it. Sorry. Here we go. So again, this, tonight, we really, we really just went over on the capital update. And again, it's a good reference for any residents. We, of course, will have this up on board docs as well as our website under our committee reports. And just to kind of remind people of either the work, we went over the work that's completed. We spoke about, uh, we're still kind of doing some investigative work on our cornice around the building and, um, we're looking, oh my goodness. It's like, he, he's barking in the living room. Sorry. So we went over the, um, cordis and, and we just spoke about, we are doing some investigative work and we'll be making a recommendation on how to move forward, um, in, on that project. We are just kind of investigating some possible cost-saving options. And that's why we're doing this investigative work. And I'll be able to provide a little bit more information. As I noted here, there's going to be, uh, weather permitting, a lift brought into the site next week. And if we feel that we may be able to accomplish this work at a, a more cost-effective, um, way, we, we are going to move forward that recommendation. So again, I was just updating the facilities committee on that this evening. Um, we just kind of briefly went over, um, and we've been talking a lot about this recently, excuse me, on the hillside update. And unfortunately, the snow is a little bit, been a little bit challenging for us this week because we had hoped to, um, do our utility mark out already. But again, we feel confident that we'll be able to get that done this weekend. And as we've been, in by the board approving the contracts this evening under the business has given us the final kind of go-ahead of, of getting this mobilization, um, next week on this project. And again, um, we're anticipating, um, that this work will continue till about a year from, from now. And that that project, uh, we're hoping the, we'll be able to use that space, um, sometime. I mean, it would be great in February, but definitely by March. And if things go well, maybe a bit earlier. And then the, we spoke about, um, the middle school auditorium and the music rooms. And again, instead of going into great detail on both, but just kind of going over, um, the update there, we are looking to submit those plans. In the, in the next few weeks, um, we'll kind of just really briefly review, uh, where, where, what we're submitting to the state for that work. Um, we're hoping that if all goes well, that we'll be able to, um, meet all these deadlines. The one thing that we have been of recently, our, our architects have The one thing that we have been, recently, our, our architects have said, you know, they're, they are seeing some delays in the supply chain. So because of that, you know, there, it may, it may mean some of these projects may be a month or so later than we had hoped for. But again, we try to build that into the timeline we presented this evening to the Facilities Committee. So again, because of the fact that some of the seats and things may not be as readily available as we hoped. Again, this is just to get a sketch, and we spoke tonight and Doug had made the recommendation, which I agree with, that we're going to ask our architects to make kind of more user-friendly renderings of these. So this way we can display them for, for parents and have them on our website to kind of give people a better sense of what the space is going to look like. But again, we've spoke about the middle school is really a full refurbishment. And, you know, really this, this layout here just kind of shows the different aspects of the work that's going on, including an improvement to the ADA accessibility of the space, air conditioning, which of course you can't really see on the sketch. But again, that was a big part of the renovation of this room and the mechanical, the mechanics in doing so was a big aspect of this project. And we are projecting, you know, this room will be fully handicap accessible, new flooring, new seats, new A, new AV, ADA accessibility to the stage, refurbishment of the stage and lighting and curtains, and really making it a really wonderful usable space for not only the theater and the music department, but for all the teachers in the middle school. And we know this will just provide an additional learning space that, that we're hoping that it is used all day long. Again, this is just kind of a rendering that shows some of the work that's happening in that lighting booth above and kind of outlines the, the work that'll be happening there, which is really in changing out the AV equipment and also providing some additional storage. And, and we'll be doing that in also the, the front of the auditorium. Because of course, having the ability to store things makes the space more flexibility in using it because of course they want to be able to store risers and, and different equipment so that the space can be used and that the, all these things will remain on the stage. These are not that we're necess, we're not getting orange seats, but this is just an example of the seating that we're recommending, which would have a tablet table for, for students to bring in their devices as well as a plug so that each individual student, if they needed to plug in their power cords, that all these seats, we, we felt that was an important detail. Because again, we want to, we want not only it to be used for performances, but certainly by, by all, all of our teachers. And again, this is just some examples of the ADA chairlifts and things that are going to be also in that space to just really ensure that even, even visitors visiting, if there's grandparents or does someone has some problems other than using the elevator, there, there's going to be some additional accessibility to the space. Again, these are just renderings and they kind of just show, and we spoke about this tonight. So a lot of the finishes, you know, we have to submit it to the state and basically it's more about the mechanics of the space, the electrical. Those are the items and the structural components of it. In terms of design, and when I say design, I mean details of the space, color, finishes, the chairs, we'll be convening a committee in the next few weeks or a month or so and, and bringing in folks from the middle school leadership team, district leadership team. We'll invite other stakeholders, you know, just to, to help us in the selection of those finishes. So again, there's, it's a restoration of the space, but and of course acoustical panels, but colors and finishes, we'll still have the opportunity to have folks help us in selecting those. And again, the Farragut Music Suite, very similar timeline. It's a, it's a, not as extensive of a renovation. So we anticipate that that space will be available. We had hoped by September 1st, again, I had mentioned, we are building in a little bit of a buffer, considering what we're hearing in terms of the ability maybe to get new lighting and things like that. So we just want to ensure that we're giving ourselves that buffer. In the event, we need an additional month for that work to be completed. We just spoke about that this space, and we've spoken about this before, it really reflects the programming of that space and making sure that it really serves the purpose of our music professionals. And they were completely involved in, in what the needs were of those spaces. And then of course, with our design architects who really then helped bring, make some recommendations to make the space function better. And again, it's a lot about layout, storage, and the use of that space. So again, this is just kind of a rendering and one of the, the, some of the things where they existed or shifted around a bit. But what's really nice is the flow of the room. Currently, the storage area is a kind of like a closed-in closet. And this will allow for, you know, students to circulate and come through that area. And the orientation of the room, we're suggesting kind of a flip-flop. And that'll definitely serve the teachers better because currently their back is kind of to the door there and it works better in the flow of the space. And then we just, as part of thinking about our upcoming budget, we had a just discussion about some of the work we're anticipating. Each year in our budget, we do earmark some dollars, and it is part of our ongoing commitment to maintaining our facilities. And we just spoke tonight about what, what some of the preliminary recommendations that Joe and I were discussing. And again, it's all aligned to, um, we have a annual visual inspection, which is really, architects come in, they, they look. But it sounds like they come in, they, they look at your facilities and they make, they make recommendations or they rather notate areas in which we need to be focusing or thinking about either putting some dollars for, you know, improvement or fixing different areas. So, um, just, you know, of course, we, we could spend more than this each year, but try to really focus it on the priorities. So currently, we're anticipating about $100,000 with the work, which is consistent with what we've had the last few years in that budget. And Joe just kind of highlighted at a high level, you know, we, we've replaced a tremendous amount of doors throughout the district. We're really close to completing that. Doors are extremely expensive. They not only serve, I mean aesthetically, they look better, but they're also for safety. Is that they're, you know, the, the main objective of switching outdoors for both fire as well as, you know, overall school safety, recommend, recommending different types of doors to be installed in classrooms. So we're, this will do our, some, some areas in our fifth grade. This is really at the Farragut complex. We're recommending that. You know, we spoke just about the sidewalks. Sidewalks are, you know, all around us. We have, want to make sure that our students and also visitors to our property are safe and walking on them. And we just try, we're kind of at a point in which we believe we need to start kind of doing some work each year in that. So it doesn't overwhelm us. And as Valerie had mentioned, you know, we really want to be thoughtful so that we don't let some of these things build up and grow and then become more expensive. So again, we're recommending about 50,000 out of approximately close to 300,000 of sidewalks, district-wide again, that we have identified. And we spoke about the duct cleaning district-wide. It was something that Joe was on his radar. And then, you know, just thinking about this year. And of course, it's just an important process that we should be engaging in every, Joe had said, you know, no, no more than five years. So, so we're at a point in which we need to do that district-wide. And we felt that that was, although other items were important, that was an important item to budget for. And then we just kind of really spoke at a high level about, you know, not only do we have our annual visual inspection, we also have our own internal needs assessment that we do with our principals and our all of, all of our leadership and of, of course, working with their individual people at their building to identify, you know, what are the needs of, of our current student population, or what are their anticipated needs over the next few years? Because we have to plan for those as, as children either say move from Hillside and they move to the middle school, whether it be enrollment, whether it be programs for all types of learners. We, we need to be planning for that and ensuring that that's part of our overall five-year look at of our facilities planning. And we, we spoke about that. We engage in that each year as part of, just try to plan our work for the summer as well as making sure that people have the spaces they need. And as Joe had mentioned earlier in the meeting, the five-year plan, actually, the, the state has given it all, all districts a little bit longer in terms of submitting that finalized plan to the state. But again, that doesn't mean whether the state required us to do it or not, it, it's important to do it because we really do need to identify and plan for, and that's part of our five-year budgeting process to ensure that we have, we, we don't let things slip through the cracks and we're keeping up our facilities and also, you know, ensuring that our needs are met. And then again, facilities use, I think we spoke about this during the budget process. So I don't think there's a need to kind of go over this just about, you know, about just thinking about the, the different groups and, and the fees they pay us. So that, that was basically the rundown of the facilities meeting this evening.
Maureen, or any trustees have any questions or thoughts about the information from the facilities meeting?
Just again, great. I said this in the meeting, but I'll say it again now, just the amount of time that Maureen and Joe, leading the charge, Valerie also obviously highly involved and the entire facilities crew in driving these decisions forward and complex, getting the complex, you know, process through COVID, through with the approvals, and then two feet of snow pushing us back two weeks. You know, it's obviously staying on top of it's a lot. So thanks for pushing all that forward.
I agree. It's rather impressive that all of this continues to move forward in the face of everything. And I just, I'm, I'm happy to see that the air duct cleaning component as part of the plan. And I, I don't know if you can remind us, because I know I've been asked in regards to, you know, the potential for, you know, reopening phase end of this year, that there was significant change to the filtering or, or review of the filtering that occurred in both Hillside and the FMS complex that occurred. And I know there's been questions because I know other districts are now spending extra dollars in terms of filtering and air processing systems and things. And Maureen, can you just remind us briefly what the review was? Because I seem to recall that in terms of facility air quality, that, that, that's not a factor that we need to consider for the spring if we were able in terms of spatial distancing to reopen, that that would not be a factor that would hinder us. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So just to remind, you know, what the work we did, we did engage over the summer. We felt it was important as we were getting questions. We had a full engineering review done of our spaces to ensure if there were, were some areas in which could use improvement that we addressed prior to opening. And in that engineering review, we, they did in fact find areas in which some kind of interior spaces, they made recommendations on some ERVs and its exhaust systems and such to ensure proper air exchanges. We were fortunate that we did make some modifications. We were in fair, what I would consider good shape overall. And, and some of it had to do with the fact that on our last bond, we had done some improvements in the, in Hillside in particular. In the HVAC systems there were upgraded. So because of that, with the addition to some of the recommendations by our engineers and architects, that those two things, we felt comfortable with the air exchange in the rooms. So, so we are in good shape there. I am aware, as you mentioned, Lauren, I know in particular, I know Harrison, only because I had a friend there, he kind of shared with us that they, they are getting kind of this enhanced. It's like a machine, actually. It's not, not so much a infrastructure type of an item. It's, it's an actual machine that sits in the room. And it's a, I think it has like UV lights and things like that, but they, there are districts. And again, I, I'm not so familiar with what state they're, you know, they may have needed it. I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, I think, I think there are districts. I don't want to speak out of turn about Harrison, but you know, some districts maybe because of the, it may have been a better or cost-efficient way if, if there were other larger improvements they had to make. But on, there are districts that are investing some money, I think. But I'm pretty sure they spent over, well over a million dollars on those units. So, and again, they, they felt that that was helpful to their needs. But I think we're in good shape and especially, you know, this time of year it's tough. And we also, as, as all districts are encouraging the windows to be open and things like that. But our air exchanges in our room and everything was functioning correctly. And I think that in addition with that duct cleaning and that'll be another kind of, you know, process that we'll, we'll make sure that's happening as well. But I think we're in good shape.
Thank you, Maureen.
Welcome. And we have added just the purifiers and in some spaces, just to kind of, in, in some of the multi-use spaces as well.
We can move on to the second public comment period. Any members on the call from the public that would like to make a public comment may do so by using the raise hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom screen. If you're called upon, please state your name. And if you're a resident of Hastings, you may address the board on any district business and please keep your comments limited to two minutes. Thank you.
Andy Zimmerman?
Yeah, hi. Well, okay. Yes, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the presentation we saw before from Mattel. You know, I've been looking at their stuff that they have online and I also heard what they had to say. And I just want to say, you know, I mean, I'm glad we're thinking about strategically and long-term and all that. I'm not sure whether they're the right people to do it. And one thing that gives me pause is I feel like they want us to figure out what we want to do as a school district, but they seem to have a definite point of view about it. And that's shown in this whole idea, you know, on their website, they, they contrast the more old-fashioned values such as, you know, they show a picture of this sort of sad, very old-fashioned looking kid in black and white. And it says math, science, English, social studies. And then they contrast that with supposedly the future that they're bringing into, which is this kind of more happy, colorful looking kid. And it says collaboration and communication and things like that, 20th, 21st century ideas. And, and I don't know, I just, I'm, I'm, the thing, the thing is, I feel like we already do that pretty well in our district. We already have a lot of communication, collaboration, and working together as a team on things and projects in these sort of more like touchy-feely kind of 21st century. I mean, yes, we all understand that that's the future, but I don't really feel like human nature has changed that much. I mean, my, my, my kid will tell me, oh, everything's different now, Dad. But I don't know, I think people are still the same. And I think we need like rigorous, challenging math skills. And we need English, reading and writing, like reading, writing, arithmetic. Those things are still going to be relevant in the 21st century and probably the 22nd century if, if our kids live that long. So, you know, I, I, I just, I feel like that's actually more, it's not that that doesn't happen in our schools, but I feel like I would like to see my kid get more of it. And I feel like I'd more of a challenge, more rigor, and, you know, being able to do math, not just with a calculator, but on a piece of paper and even in your head, for instance. Okay. So anyway, I, 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 all right, I say what I had to say. Thank you.
Joshua Saltzman?
Yeah, hi. I'm a Hillside parent of a kindergartner and a third grader. I also had a comment on the presentation. I also had a comment on the presentation. I'm not, I don't have a lot of experience with strategic planning process on like Mr. Sundheim. So I appreciated hearing a bit more about it. I find it very kind of abstract and vague. I'm open to learning more about it. And I believe, you know, the idea of having a vision for the school is good, you know, for the school system is good. I guess you know, first, just a question would be, is there anywhere we can see kind of the more substantive work product of Batel? You know, beyond just these sort of posters that they produce. I know they mentioned that they have other more substantive deliverables that were sort of like I don't know if booklet is the right word for them, like 30, 40 page documents. So one, I'm just wondering if those are available somewhere, samples that we could see. And then the other thing, sort of echoing Doug's comment. You know, I think that a lot, you know, I and a lot of parents I speak to right now, you know, are a bit in survival mode. And I think that we're just not, perhaps not as open to this kind of process as we might be. Especially when we feel like, you know, at least at the elementary level, our kids sort of basic social and emotional needs are not being met. You know, and we're watching our kids unhappy and suffer. It's, it makes it very hard to kind of, you know, bring the attitude I'd like to bring, you know, to a sort of long term planning project about the kind of graduates who want to see. You know, so I think that, you know, at least until we see kids, you know, in school full time, I think it's 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 hard for me personally. You know, as someone who is open minded about it and would like to learn more about it and would like to consider, you know, even participating in the process. It doesn't feel like the right time to me right now. Additionally, just because of the expense, you know, when I remember hearing, you know, over the past months that, you know, there were certain upgrades maybe that could help us return to school that would cost money that we didn't have. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. Sometimes I just Okay, well, thank you. I think I said what I need to say.
I don't think we have. There's no more hands raised.
Thank you, Melissa. Are there any comments from the board?
I just wanted to say that I thinking about what this, what Josh Saltzman, who I, I don't know him, but it was, I think his words about people being in survival mode is, I think are very relevant. And I think the relentlessness for everybody as this is like, we have a, I guess, a year anniversary of dealing with this is really makes it hard. And probably Valerie had mentioned something in the beginning. I apologize. I couldn't be here for the beginning of the meeting, but it is nice to know that there are some wonderful things that come out of Hastings. And I'm thinking about how exciting it was to watch Ali Marpet play in the Super Bowl, even though I don't like to watch football very much anymore. And to know that Kate Burner is Deputy Communications Director for President Biden. And the Courtney Gilliam was the first female, first doctor to be vaccinated at Seattle Children's Hospital, and she'll be the graduation speaker this year. I think those are all really wonderful things to kind of hold on to as some, you know, real pride in our community. And I know there are many, many more stories out there. Those are the ones that come to mind, but just wanted to put a little positive touch.
Are you gonna go, Jeremy? No. I just wanted to comment on the Batel for Kids. I think that the two comments were valid and in in fair points. To the one, you know, this is where I I am in terms of the the whole process. I mean, this has been something that, you know, I've heard about since before I got on the board. It's coming up on three years and everyone keeps saying, you know, we need to do a strategic plan. We need to you know, we need to think through all these, all these different things. So, so I think that that we do. I think that it's still something that that makes sense. I do have concerns to Doug's point about the process of going through this and just kind of, you know, having a lot of discussions. What I've, what I've seen, and I haven't done many of these strategic plans, especially in a school, but what I've seen is that these processes take a long time. I think they said it takes a year. And then sometimes maybe the board members flip over and and you've got this 30 page report and you don't really do that much with it. And that would be a big concern about sort of, you know, how do you actually make sure that you're coming up with things that are valuable and that you're actually following through and executing on them? The point that was made before about people in survival mode, and I think it's a fair point that, you know, people want to see their kids, especially in the younger grades. They're really focused on, you know, their kids kind of getting back to normal. But I, I think that we could decide to move forward, but not necessarily have to commit to starting the process now. So that that piece of it is it more of a timing nuance that that doesn't concern me as much. I would like to see some other organizations though, because there was some discussion about opening this up to an RFP and and I think Valerie, you mentioned that Bronxville did this really well. And I don't know who Bronxville used, but I know that, you know, their superintendent was was here in in Hastings. And you know, that's the perfect example of, you know, if we had done this six, seven years ago and done it the right way and followed through on it, instead of kind of talking about needing to do it and pushing it down the road. You know, maybe folks would be talking about, you know, the great plan that Hastings has executed again. So so I think that not doing it doesn't really help us if we actually believe that this is something that at our core, we really do need to do. And and I've heard from a lot of people when I was running for the board, I've heard from people since been on the board that we need to have some strategic plan. So I don't think that there would ever be, Valerie, you said this, I think it was in an email, but you know, there's never a perfect time, especially in tax cap world. So I I agree with that. I do think that we should do it. I, I would love to see some others to feel like Batel for Kids was the right fit because this is not something that we're going to do twice. We're gonna, we're gonna do it. We're gonna do it the right way. And hopefully it works and we have a plan. And I don't know that their presentation crushed it tonight. I mean, I, I wasn't sold that that they are the best. And maybe they are, but but I think it does give us the chance to take a look at some others and 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 understand what the differences are. And and then think about the timing of when would be the right time to actually start the process, not necessarily commit to it, but but start it, whether that's, you know, the summer or you know, the fall or 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 now, although now it does seem like, you know, not a perfect time. Not necessarily from a financial perspective. And I understand what people are saying about finances, but if this is something that we should have done five years ago, I don't see why it wouldn't be something that we should do today. So that that's kind of where I am on on this, at this moment, sort of would love to see one or two others that are in this space and compare them and and feel like, you know, what Batel for Kids is doing is, you know, so much better than someone else or or, you know, maybe there's someone else who resonates with with our group more than than they than they do or or they did.
I didn't want to go right after Jody because I like that she brought the the good side to it. But I'm going to bring the the doom and the gloom here. I think this board and our administration needs to consider a worst case scenario still. What do we control staffing and programs? We don't control the politics of the states playing games trying to get federal aid. I don't want us to bank on rosy estimates when the state tells us to. They're still paying us because they're trying to get more money from a new administration. We did it so well. And by we, I should drop the we, I wasn't involved. The administration did it so well, playing conservative last year, and we still had to go into reserve funds. Budgeting for 4.7, when we ended up maybe getting 5.1, that's why we were able to make expenditures on COVID. That's why when it got worse, we were able to keep buying and keep buying. So I'm not, I'm not a believer that we're past the doom and the gloom. If we control staffing and programs and everything else in the budget is pretty much very difficult, let's not add $200,000 to the budget and then try to find other years when we fight to cut it. Let's just not add it this year. We've seen a lot of slides. We can't sustain a model where we're using reserves. What we can control is our current initiatives. Our expectations for class sizes and electives. I would like to be able in September, if our kids and students are still not vaccinated, to be able to drop $100,000 on those three sided clear barriers. And we're not doing that by adding programs for $80,000. It is time to do what they did so well. By they, of course, I mean the people I'm looking at, the board I'm looking at here and the administration. They did so well by preparing for a difficult budget. It's coming again. We represent more than just the students and the families with students. We represent a community that is not all working for Netflix, Amazon and Apple. Every tax increase hurts. I think we need to try to come and change our priorities. And today, the Batel thing, graphic designer in-house, they have a lot of great programs, a lot of great six sided diagrams. I'm not on board. I don't want that spending. And there's a lot of other things I'm afraid of. Let's do one more year and see where we're going. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board?
I would just say you know, the budget's going to continue to evolve. And I think to Jeremy's point, we need scenarios, but you know, at the same time, but we did see a good scenario tonight. And we need to just continue to find, you know, scenarios. And you know, that's what we did great. That's what we did really well last time. And that's what I'm sure Maureen and Valerie are thinking about this time. Just, you know, multiple, I mean, I think the third to last slide, so to get it that right, you know, 10% off and if it was a 20% off part of that slide too, but you know. So I think that that's, you know, scenarios is how we have to continue to think. So from that perspective, I agree with Jeremy. God just have a variety of scenarios. You know, I, you know, on the strategic planning stuff, I think it's really important to have a clear idea of where you're going and have alignment on that. You know, it's, I think it's hard for an organization or a community to be successful without having clear alignment and where you're going. Yeah, I think, and I don't think anyone here would disagree with that. I think the question becomes how and when do we get there? I've just, I've, I've been doing this for too long. I've seen too many, I've seen too many people want that and you know, the road to strategic hell is paved with good intentions. And you know, it's, you know, and I would actually disagree with what Jeremy Arnon said. I mean, the problem with strategic planning is kind of the way that you framed it, Jeremy, meaning you know, there is this kind of the promise of the plan mentality that people have, and that plan never actually shows up ever in any organization, which is why a lot of organizations move away from it. So you know, the one thing Batel talked about that I think has a lot of value is this idea of true north. You know, you need some conceptual true north. You need these kind of really critically important things that are drawing you. What that means is it lays out year after year after year, just changes and evolves. And, you know, it's not so much a plan that matters. It's your, it's your continual iteration abilities that matter. And I think, you know, quite frankly, education probably historically, I mean, nothing with Hastings or anything, just has not been great at the continual evolution in the way that, you know, like whatever creative destruction and, you know, innovation stuff that, you know, business organizations have. So I just think the DNA of, you know, what's, what's ironic to me is we're talking about building a certain type of student body that is highly collaborative, dynamic, project based in a world that has not been that for decades and decades and decades. I mean, you know, it's like, there's a reason why this stuff is so hard in educational organization because educational organizations are, you know, the kind of the definition of kind of ossified structures. This has nothing to do with Hastings. This is just like what we're trying to change. So it's, you know, I just think, you know, the it's always heading towards some sort of massive challenge in a politically charged environment where you've got budgets. So, you know, I, I think the most important thing is to figure out how to get to that true north. And I would agree with Batel on that. When we do it, how we do it, I'm not sure. Are we in a position to do it well right now? I'm not sure. But that that is what we need to have. We need to have some sort of clarity about what we're doing. I love the idea of getting kids more involved. So I don't want to lose that when we do it. I honestly, my honest opinion is we could not do it this year. And we could, we could wait till next year. And and I think that would be okay. That's my honest opinion. But but I think there is, there's an element of that which, you know, needs, really needs to be done. You know, I, similar to Andy Zimmerman, I found that, you know, kind of dichotomous picture of some kid from the 50s and go, it just I mean, that's just ridiculous. It's, it's, it's so much past this just simple dichotomy at this point in the game. It's, it's, it's a very nuanced world that we live in now that takes something more than that. So obviously, I don't want to keep going here. I have a lot of very strong opinions about planning and the stuff. I think about it all day. I've been doing it for 15 or 20 years. So but I, I, I think there is something there. We need to continue to pursue it. I just don't know if it looks, what it looks like right now. So sorry, that went off for a while.
So if I hear you correctly, Maureen, we'll pause on the RFP since it doesn't seem like we're moving forward on that. So we'll just, we won't spend any more time on that. And then we'll just wait until the board is, you know, feels what, you know, feel, you know, what, wait until the board has a sense of when you feel it's the right time to do it. That seems to make the most sense.
Well, I actually like to see other companies. And then at least we'll have a sense of who the players are out there. And and then we can back into when the right decision is. Unless that, that time to line those companies up is a resource drain.
I think it is. I think if we're only going to just have them do presentations, I don't, I don't think we want people to use their time doing that. I think the board has to think about when, since this was an idea that, you know, again, I came into a system that talked about this ad nauseam. So, you know, I support it, obviously. And would certainly do what the board tasks me to do to move the idea forward. But I do think it is a matter of the board considering, you know, when you think the best time is for this. And then I think to, to look at the, you know, who's out there, who's doing this, you know, in a way that would be, you know, of interest in terms of the, the approach and the type of work that they're doing. And again, you know, the plan itself is really not the central part. It's what the adults in the system do to implement the plan. That's been my own experience. So I think, you know, at this point, there's a lot of uncertainty. So I think that we would, we would, so that no one's energies are spent on, on, on looking at this any further. I think we just wait until the board is ready to, to, to move forward, you know, in a way that, again, it would make sense to engage other organizations that do this work and then set that up appropriately. So I'm perfectly fine with you, you know, with the board, you know, pausing on this because this is a lot of work to try to pull together. And I don't want to waste my time either, you know, but I do want to, I do respect what the board is saying and about not the right time, isn't the right time. I wished I had known sooner. I would have been happy not to get to, to, to bring Batel in and waste their time. But I think we had to go through this. So now we're through it. I think we have to, to do it the right way going forward in terms of making sure, you know, it is the right time that, 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 you know.
A waste of time for anyone to ever present to the board. I mean, I, you know, I've made many sales pitches and, you know, you don't close all the business. And it's never a waste of time to let a group of people know what your, you know, qualifications are. So I understand what you're saying about, you know, you don't want to waste their time. But, but we also, you know, you know, the fact is that, you know, you become a more educated consumer by seeing what the options are out there. So, you know, this is, this is a, this is an important, you know, this is an important task that, that we'll be working with a company on. And, and I think timing is one thing, but also having a comparison, I think is a fair thing.
I really value the opinions that people brought forward tonight. I mean, I think, I, I shared at the outset, my enthusiasm for both the process and the timing. I feel like, I think, I feel, you know, I felt like this was a very positive meeting for, for several reasons. First, we're at the stage of entertaining the thought of moving forward with a strategic planning process. It's only taken, you know, my three years being on the board to get us here. And I know that there are previous iterations of boards that, that also attempted prior to my three years. It was also incredibly heartening to hear the, the state aid as being restored. I do have faith that that will occur, will find with, within the next four weeks that the legislature is going to confirm that. And I also found that the construction update was thoroughly invigorating. You know, that was a plan that has been pushed through despite COVID. And, you know, that's at the, you know, the work of this board and our administration. I've found this meeting to be very uplifting and one which I have not felt in a long time. It is disheartening to hear that, that the misgivings people have about the timing of Batel are valid. And I'm trying to really listen to that. But I do trust that Valerie has vetted the field of, of providers in terms of consultants, in terms of the educational space on, on what, you know, what the field is in terms of, you know, expertise and in terms of the financial burden of working with them. I don't know that it's been said in a board meeting, but we've heard from Valerie and Maureen that it would be reimbursable at approximately 40% through a contract with BOSI's. So that is another incentive to work with this particular consultant, not that that cost should be the only reason why we would work with one. You know, I, I just, I'm feeling, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, yes, I am a parent of a kindergartner and an eighth grader. And yes, you know, my daily life is in constant survival mode as well and top of my work life and work with the board as well. But being so completely directionless through this pandemic while trying to be a leader in this board is, has been exhausting at a level that I don't think would be there had the groundwork really been in there to provide us with the North Star in advance. And to put off the type of meaningful work, it feels, it feels disheartening. And I am, I am trying to listen to all of you because it, as, you know, I really did hear when the representatives said that, that when the board is ready and the leadership is ready, that the community will follow along. And it certainly would not be productive if the group of us collectively did not feel a sense of readiness. So despite however I might feel in terms of an eagerness to move forward, it, it, you know, I'm one of seven, so I'm really listening. And I just wanted to say that my eagerness is, is really rooted in the fact that, you know, our, our students deserve so much. They deserve so much from our system and they have amazing teachers. They have amazing peers. But without real common vocabulary of what their purpose is in school. I think it's really, I see it in my own students. I see it in their friends. I feel like the investment that students have, particularly in the pandemic to their work at school is waning. And without a common vocabulary to really guide us as a community toward, toward real achievement. I think we're really, it's a shortfall. It's really, we're really not providing all we can to our kids. And that's my eagerness. That's where it comes from. So I, I hope we continue conversation after the February break. I encourage each of you to do your own research to see what other opportunities there are in the, in the, you know, field of strategic planning in the education space, if that's something that interests you. But I do trust that Valerie has brought forward a really reputable group that would be an affordable one. So, you know, in general, I, I thought this was a really positive meeting. I had a very different take on it, but I, it does help me to hear that others felt otherwise.
And I, I don't want my comments to be taken as not trusting, but I thought that there was discussion that we had to open this up to an RFP anyway. Wasn't that, wasn't that?
Right. So, I mean, so I think that in terms of the point, the very important point made by Batel is that there has to be a coalescence at the board level and at the district level. I mean, so at the district level, you have it at the board level. And if we don't have everyone on board to, you know, to engage in the work, I don't think we're there yet. I mean, so if I had to make a decision on the readiness of the board now, just upon, based upon the comments I've heard, I would say we're not ready. And I think that we shouldn't waste our resources and the, you know, the meat, the few resources that we do have engaging in this further. And I, I agree with Lauren's point of, you know, you know, people can conduct their own research. You know, there are a number of districts that have been, you know, had, you know, you know, engaged in this a long time ago. And so I think, and then actually are on their other sort of versions of this. So you can check, you know, I think you could, you know, we're surrounded by, you know, some examples of that. So I think it'd be very easy to look at, you know, what's taking place. And that, you know, may be of value, you know, as sort of a benchmark to look at. So in place of having others come in and present to the board, I think to talk to certain districts. And I mentioned Bronxville only because, you know, Melissa and I actually were there a couple of times because they were, they've been engaged actually two different times in the last five years of actually, you know, re-examining, you know, the, the work that they, they've been doing, you know, in, you know, in terms of setting their own North Star, you know, around, you know, 21st century learning. So I think, I mean, I think that that would be an appropriate step as well to take a look at some of the, you know, some of what some of the other districts have done, which would probably, you know, even, you know, also kind of, you know, provide a more sense. So when the board is ready, you know, you have some sense of even, you know, what you think you'd like to do. So that would be my recommendation, but I definitely don't think based upon the feedback that this is, you know, we, we're missing a main ingredient. And, and it doesn't make forward, it doesn't make sense to move forward without that leadership commitment, you know, to, to make the work happen.
Yeah, I would be supportive of the way Valerie explains it, you know? Not just when the board's ready. I mean, can we get through the building additions that we're doing? Can we get through the pandemic instruction that we're doing? Can we evaluate the needs of our students as they come out of a once in a century change for families? And I think we can look around. I mean, the RFP thing seemed to be one avenue of people expressing maybe disapproval for spending. But I think in general, it's, it's when is the right time? And it could be when we solve the next three big items. State funding is uncertain. And we have some big challenges. And if it's one year, two year, three year, we look around. But I like the way Jeremy said it. It's never, never bad to hear a pitch. And the community is lucky that we got to hear that pitch. But we have the teachers, we have the principals, and we have the administrators to move our students' needs forward. When it comes up again, maybe, maybe Batel is, is the, the path will take.
There are motion to close the Board of Education meeting. And a second? Second. All in favor?
Good night.